We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the April first, 2024, meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you are able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison? Absent. Councilmember Song?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Radina?
Here.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Absent.
Mayor Taylor?
Absent.
Councilmember Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
Mayor Protem, we have a floor.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda this evening? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Song. Any discussion of the agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is, or the agenda is approved. Do we have any communications from our city administrator this evening? I know that Mr. DeHoney is joining us online.
No, Mayor, no communications this evening.
Thank you. This evening, we have two introductions. The first is a monthly update from the Chair of our Independent Community Police Oversight Commission. Chair Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you. I don't have a lengthy report for you this evening. A couple of things. We had planned to have our Meet the New Chief event in April, at our April meeting, but we need more time. We want to have a very nice event, and we want to get as many of the community members here as possible. And so, as of now, definitely, we have canceled for the April 23rd date, and it is tentatively, until we secure a venue, going to be for our May meeting. And I know all of you had planned to come to the April meeting, so please, if you would put on your agendas now for May 28th. For the, we're inviting the entire community, everyone here as well, to come out and meet Chief Anderson face to face. We are in the process, I mentioned to you last month, about presenting a new resolution for the information on traffic stop data to be reported out to ICPOC. We are looking at finalizing that resolution at our April meeting, and we will then forward it on to the Police Department for comment, and then hopefully, it will be here in front of you, and we are certainly encouraging you to seriously consider it and pass it. Finally, we have a couple of meetings scheduled for this week. Our Training Committee is meeting with the Police Department Training Staff on tomorrow, and we are beginning to look at the training that our officers get initially and periodically. And so, that is starting. And then, we have scheduled also a meeting with the Chief and the Command Officers this week as well, so that we can look at expectations and policies and practices. So that's where we are. If there are no questions, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Carter. Our second introduction this evening is a proclamation celebrating National Fair Housing Month. With us to honor the occasion is Amanda Carlisle, Executive Director of Washtenaw Housing Alliance, and Kristin Curran Fuller, Associate Director of Fair Housing Center for Southeast and Mid-Michigan. Those representatives, please join me at the podium. We also have Jan Little from Michigan Ability Partners. First and foremost, I want to thank both of you, well, all three of you now, for joining us here this evening to accept this proclamation. I also want to thank Councilmember Gazi Edwin for working with the mayor to initiate it and for working with his office to make it happen. I know she was hoping to be here tonight to co-present this with me, but as she is attending to a medical issue, she asked me to pass along her best regards as well. Housing affordability and accessibility are quite obviously a top priority of this council and is likely one of the top reasons that most of us are here at this table at all. And yet, despite laws like the Fair Housing Act and many other local protections, discrimination in housing persists and needs to be continually and forcefully addressed. National Fair Housing Month provides us with an opportunity to celebrate the passage of the 1968 Fair Housing Act, but also to reflect upon the segregation and discrimination in housing, both past and present. Most importantly, it provides us as policymakers with a clear opportunity to recommit ourselves and our local government to confronting housing discrimination and advancing equitable access to housing within our community. So with that, whereas, April 11th, 2024, is the 56th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, and whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing in relation to race, color, national origin, religion, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, and sexual harassment, familial status and disability, regarding renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, or participating in housing-focused activities, and whereas, millions of illegal acts of housing discrimination happen each year but must remain unreported because they are difficult to recognize, and whereas, housing providers may impose policies to exclude renters and other housing participants with records of criminal conviction under the Fair Housing Act unless the amount of criminal history-based restrictions often relates to one's race, national origin, or other protected characteristic over another, or is, or if the housing providers use criminal history as pretext for unequal treatment of individuals because of race, national origin, or other protected characteristics. And whereas, the National Fair Housing Alliance's 2023 report shows that the highest number of housing discrimination complaints ever filed, and whereas, in 2022, the largest portion of housing discrimination complaints filed, 53.26% were due to disability, and whereas, in 2019, 18% of people with disabilities lived below the federal poverty level, and another 34% lived above the federal, living above the federal poverty level, were struggling to afford basic needs, and whereas, communities in Michigan should take stock of and survey the availability, building, and funding of accessible, affordable, and inclusive housing and publicize the information, and whereas, Michigan municipalities should increase the number of accessible housing units, increase the amount of universally designated housing and adaptable units and homes, and increase the amount of accessible, single-family housing in integrated neighborhoods that allow diverse neighborhoods to thrive together and provide options for families of all sizes. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Christopher Taylor of the City of Ann Arbor, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as National Fair Housing Month. And if any of you would like to say anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Radina and Councilmembers and the City of Ann Arbor for this proclamation. The Washtenaw Housing Alliance is working with a coalition of nonprofit and government partners to end homelessness in our county, and housing discrimination is one of the issues that we see facing a lot of people experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity. And just wanted to recognize our, two of our member agencies and partners in this work, especially the Fair Housing Center and Michigan Ability Partners, that's working with people with disabilities to get them housed and stay housed. Thank you.
We now come to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment, one must have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers have three minutes to speak, and we only have one, and we can only have one person speaking at a time. For those speaking via Zoom, the city clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time has expired. Speakers are not authorized to delegate their time to an alternate speaker. Council rules allow for 45 minutes of public comment reserved time at the beginning of the meeting. We will allow for at least 15 speakers in the initial 45-minute time period. If at the conclusion of 45 minutes, speakers remain on the public comment list, we will reopen public comment for those speakers at the end of the meeting. Our first speaker tonight is Ken Garber.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Radina. Pleasure to be with you all tonight. I'm Ken Garber, Second Ward. I'll get right to it. On DC 2 and eliminating the Planning Commission public hearing, I appreciate that you've mitigated this somewhat, but it still cuts the Agenda Item Notice period from 15 days to 18 hours. For this and other reasons, I'm still for keeping the public hearing, and it still seems weird to me that we're even talking about this. On DC 3, sustainability, you've heard me speak ad nauseam about keeping fossil fuels out of new developments, but this proposal for fast-tracking, fee-wavering, tax-abating, tiffing, and waiving Planning Commission review is all wrong. First, because it normalizes gas. It tells developers, you can build with gas if you want, there won't be a problem, but look, we have these cookies for you if you don't. Some of these cookies are taxpayer subsidies. We have builders here that have gone electric on their own, as they all should, but if this goes forward, many will try to feed from the public trough. Yes, you have the "but-for" test, but the only categories of electrified buildings that wouldn't be built but for city help are where the builder is ignorant of modern, cost-effective, gas-free construction, or does not acknowledge any responsibility for climate change. We do not want taxpayers to subsidize such developers or to smooth the process for them. If we grant the staff review cookie, we also cut out Planning Commission review and its benefits, including public comment, to reward developers for what they should be doing anyway. We have better options than normalizing gas, subsidizing developer profits, and cutting out Planning Commission, options that don't violate state law. Look what other cities have done. Burlington, Vermont charges a carbon pollution impact fee for gas-burning new developments and major renovations, $150 per metric ton CO2 per year. Such an ordinance for Ann Arbor is now stuck at Energy Commission. Last year, the Cambridge, Massachusetts City Council amended its energy benchmarking ordinance to require all large buildings to reduce emissions to net zero by 2035 or pay a compliance fee. That keeps new construction all-electric. Here, we can't even get building owners to properly report energy use under our own 2021 benchmarking law. Ann Arbor's first public report was due in 2022, but so far, nothing has appeared. If people in Burlington or Cambridge were to see DC 3, I think they would be astounded. Building electrification isn't the H20 standard anyway, it's net zero. An electrified building can still be a high emitter and add to global emissions for generations to come. So, please postpone, I suggest that you postpone DC 2 and DC 3 to allow for public discussion of these and other huge changes that I haven't had time to get into. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Eleanor Lynn.
Thank you. My name is Eleanor Lynn. I live on Forest Court, only a block and a half away from the Church Street parcels that are in question tonight. Their proposed building is too big, not ecologically sustainable, and it is against the R4C zoning regulations that apply to this neighborhood. The professional staff of the city's Planning Department has recommended that the proposal be turned down for these reasons, and the mayor's appointed Planning Commission has voted against approval because it would provide, quote, "no public good." Over 200 people, residents, workers, board members, and children's house parents have signed a letter urging you to vote no on this PUD for the same reasons. My connection to this part of my neighborhood is more personal. I have frequently canvassed that block in support of ballot issues and political candidates. I met many of the former residents as an election inspector at our local polling place. I was therefore alarmed last year when, coming home one afternoon, I saw bulldozers demolishing the houses on that block. Can you imagine all the houses on a block two streets away from you being demolished without notice? I called the city to ask what was going on. I was told that any property owner has the right to demolish their property if they plan to replace it with something that follows the same zoning regulations. In this case, the owner said they plan to build three low-rise townhouses with a total of 18 units and a maximum of 108 residents. The current bait-and-switch proposal before you, however, is six times taller than the townhouse proposal, with 15 times more units and 10 times more bedrooms. If approved, it will be an eyesore, a drain on public resources, and a blight to my neighborhood. You, as our elected representatives, need to close this bait-and-switch loophole. Otherwise, any developer can demolish existing property claiming to replace it with something of similar proportions, only to turn around and gain easy approval of something much larger and less sustainable in its place. I trust you to follow the wishes of your constituents and the common good of the city. Vote no on the 7-Eleven Church Street proposal and close this bait-and-switch loophole. Otherwise, many of us will express our preferences for what we want when we vote in the upcoming
Thank you. Next up, we have Brandon Dimchaff.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Hi, Council, this is Brandon Dimchaff, calling in from 1401 Harps in West Larrytown on the Fourth Ward. I'm calling today to our City Council to approve C1, the rezoning and site plan for a 7-Eleven church. If approved, this project will provide over 1,000 beds, much-needed student housing, a block from campus, and contribute $7 million to the Affordable Housing Fund, which is approximately the same as what we would collect via the Affordable Housing Millage this year. This building will allow more than 1,000 students to live on this small site instead of occupying over 166-bedroom rundown student rental houses in Byrd's Park, similar to the ones that were recently demolished in order to make room for this much better use of land. The recommendation for denial seems to be based on the opinion that the scale of the development is too large for the neighborhood. I disagree. This building fits in perfectly with the neighborhood. It is across the street from a dorm, adjacent to Fraternities, kitty-corner from another student high-rise, and to the south of a parking structure. It is directly across from other parcels, Zoned D1. It is not in the middle of a quiet, single-family residential neighborhood. It is even one block closer to campus than another recently-approved student housing development. This should have been upzoned by now, but for the delay to the comprehensive plan as a result of COVID. The neighborhood is almost entirely students, and this is a perfect location for more student housing. The children at Towesley will not be harmed by seeing a bulldozer or playing adjacent to a building, and shade will not fall on them until deep into the hottest part of the late afternoon. Speaking of shade, I refuse to shed a tear if a sliver of a shadow is cast upon a parking structure, the beer pong table across the street that's visible on Google Street View, and the people waiting in line for ricks in a barbed-covered alley. The only thing denying this will do is cause a worse, smaller project to be built, denying us the $7 million for the Affordable Housing Fund and putting us further behind in addressing our housing shortage. Or maybe the university will buy the lot and take it off the tax rolls forever. We need to say yes to solving one of the biggest problems facing our city. Density is good, and a benefit in itself, and it promotes efficient land use. So please approve this much-needed housing tonight. Secure the $7 million for the Affordable Housing Fund and bring, and bring us 1,000 people closer to solving our housing crisis. It would be foolish to vote down this project, and despite what day it is, please support C1. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lindell Jergens.
Hello, this is Lindell Jergens. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I am a member of the House Corporation Board of Alpha Delta Pi Sorority at 722 South Forest. We are opposed to the proposed change in the P, for the PUD for 7-Eleven Church Street. This building would be directly in back of our house. We are opposed to the size of the building being proposed at the site and the effect it will have on our residents. We are currently suffering from the effects of the construction of the 12-story building on South Forest in front of our house. The construction has affected the quality of life of our residents. We expect that the construction on Church Street will affect us in similar ways, but the overlap in timing of the two projects may not be twice as impactful but have even greater consequences. We are very opposed to having these adverse effects continuing for the next three to four years. In particular, the noise is invasive. Despite current regulations covering construction, the noise starts at 4:30 to 5:00 a.m. in the mornings on some days. Residents report that the vibrations are similar to that of an earthquake and shake our whole house and rattle our windows. We have major concerns about the effects of construction on a lot right behind us and the effects that such vibrations will have on our 100-year-old house, particularly the The city had turned off the water and restarted it, which has resulted in clogged pipes, which we had to pay to fix. Furthermore, there was little advanced notice on this and no coordination with the university's schedule. If they had waited one day, the students would have left for the holidays, and our residents would not have been inconvenienced by the lack of water. There is a lot of dust and debris from the construction, particularly while they were digging for the foundation, et cetera. What are the long-term effects of this, of breathing this? Finally, the traffic in the area has been affected. On one occasion, they tried to completely block access to our house and our parking lot. Once again, we, we ask that you consider the thoughts and feelings of the current residents of this area of South Forest Street and vote no on this PUD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Eric Avantich.
Good evening. I'm calling from the Ellen Neighborhood in Ward 3. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'd first like to express my support for DC 1, DC 2, DC 3, and DC 4. Our city are countries that will not solve themselves. They require thoughtful policies and actions to help address them. These resolutions collectively acknowledge these facts and provide tools and mechanisms to allow our city to participate in thoughtfully addressing these issues. I'm also calling in to voice my full support for the PUD zoning of 7-Eleven Church Street. We are in the midst of a housing crisis, and it's vital that all areas of city government acknowledge that and work in concert to help address that. The university continues to increase enrollment, and those students need to live somewhere. Our Housing Commissioner, Executive Director, Jennifer Hall, has stated that more and more university students are living in Ypsilanti and commuting into campus. It's imperative that we provide more housing adjacent to the university so students can walk to campus rather than commute. 7-Eleven Church Street is just one block from Central Campus and near other student housing buildings of comparable size, and it adds over 1,000 beds to the campus area of student housing. In addition, it would add more than $7 million to our city's Affordable Housing Funds and bring in around $5 million annually in tax revenue. And because these properties sit between existing university properties, it's ripe for purchase by the university, in which case, it would be removed from our tax rolls. We need multiple developments of this type, and we need them as soon as possible. I would appreciate your support on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nikki Andrews.
Good evening, everybody. I am Nikki Andrews. I am with Abraador Way, and I'm here to talk about the Rising Hope for Housing, for that funding, which is really incredible. It benefits the community by providing housing security and self-sufficiency, and it creates systematic change, because a lot of issues with people that are in reentry are generational. And it also increases public safety, residual income, and creates incentives for pro-social behavior. And as an employee with Abraador Way, I know for a fact that I've seen citizens come in, they're couch surfing, they're homeless, but when we assist them with some of this funding from Rising Hope, we assist them to get housing, they thrive. Once you have a roof over your head, you can look for a job. You have your own address. I've seen them thrive and be productive and even have a few that they're enrolling in school. So, the funding for Rising Hope for Housing, for people that are on the choice vouchers and are, in reentry, formerly incarcerated or justice-impacted, this funding, I've seen firsthand from working at Abraador Way, which is an amazing organization, I've seen how it has helped them. And when you think about it, you know, no place to really lay your head, and you're couch surfing and... couch surfing, and you have nowhere to go, it's very difficult to get on your feet to be productive in society. So the funding with Rising Hope to help these citizens is extremely important, and I really hope we can keep it that way. And thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Jevons.
Hi, my name is Lisa Jevons, and I worked on the petition against the 7-Eleven Church Street PUD, which now has over 250 signatures on it. I live at 1312 Cambridge Road in North Burns Park, just a few blocks from the project. I want to give you three reasons why I worked on this petition. First, I wanted my neighbors to know about the underhanded PUD process by which our town is turning into concrete canyons made up of unaffordable luxury student high-rises with empty storefronts below. This is confusing and alarming our neighbors. I want to point out to them that it is you, their elected city council, that has indiscriminately upzoned and upscaled our city with no regard for proper urban planning or affordability. Most Ann Arborites think the university should house its own students. What a concept. It has the land and the money to do so. Luxury apartments with $2,000 to $3,000 a month rent are taking Ann Arbor in the wrong direction. Other college towns are pushing back on this trend, but Ann Arbor is welcoming it and paving the way. The second reason I worked on this petition is because our neighborhood is at risk under this haphazard development system due to its proximity to campus. By approving luxury student high-rise PUDs, you drive up property values and rents, leaving our neighborhood unprotected by its own zoning, which now means nothing. I look out my front porch onto South Forest Street. A developer like this could easily buy up multiple rental homes right there, tear them down, and propose a 17-story building for 1,000 people in North Burns Park. You would probably approve it, too. The fact that this even could happen is a total betrayal of our community. The third reason I worked on this petition is that I want neighbors to recapture their voices. It has been clear for a long time that city council is not listening to the community, not paying attention to neighborhoods. Let me remind you that the 250 people who signed this petition are the voters. We are your constituents, not the developers. We are your kids' teachers, your doctors, your nurses, your realtors, your artists, your daycare workers, your professors. We support the public schools and the arts. We volunteer for everything. We work the polls on Election Day. We pay very high property taxes, and we are tired of being ignored. I saw on this agenda that the city intends to encourage market-rate housing for non-students. Bravo. 7-Eleven Church Street is a great place to start. Tell the developer to revert to the original plan for townhomes that could house families and workers. Show us that Ann Arbor can live up to its stated values of sustainability, equity, and inclusion right now by voting no on this unnecessary and harmful PUD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Hughes.
Hello. I'm here to urge you to approve 7-Eleven Church. And even though you have recommendations against it from staff and from the Planning Commission, you also have on the agenda these economic development resolutions that would make it be that housing is the city's number-one priority. And, you know, if staff is going to recommend against this because there's too much housing, it's probably because they hadn't read that recommendation yet. It's probably because they haven't been directed towards these, housing being our number-one priority yet, but I think it would be pretty silly to deny a housing project for having too much housing and then set housing to be our number-one priority. Instead, we should celebrate the fact that there's a lot of housing, and we should not let this great project be ruined by a red tape. I also wanted, while I'm here, to talk about how, oh, by the way, and you should definitely pass those economic development resolutions, but I'm also here to talk about the RFP for unarmed response. I saw that today an amendment was issued that took off the requirement that unarmed response call 911 if they witness a crime, and that is good, because you need to be assured that when you're calling this thing, the police aren't going to come and kill you, because otherwise, you're going to have minorities with the same fear to call unarmed response as they are to call armed response, if it's going to end up with them or their friends dead. But there's also a bunch of things on there that still should be changed, like the city is still requiring that unarmed response people be able to set up a 24/7 crisis response, even though the city already knows from the last round of RFP that no one can do this. And so I don't know why the city would want to set itself up for failure again. It seems like it's a waste of staff time to go through repeated round after round of reissuing the RFP when we could just change the things that made it so that people couldn't do this. The other things are, I'm quite concerned about the insistence in the RFP that even minor crimes are things that
Thank you.
...response can't do. So it's public drunkenness. Okay, thanks. Think about that stuff.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ellen Ramsburg.
Good evening. Ellen Ramsburg, Alderman Cambridge Road in Ann Arbor. I want to speak to you about luxury student high-rises that are becoming a hot sector for the national real estate market in towns like Ann Arbor, where there are major universities. The high rents in these buildings have made them attractive investments. They return a reliable stream of profits for large asset management firms, and buildings are getting taller and bigger in order to provide the rate of return that investors expect. Investors have recognized that students are a captive market and that the cost of rent is factored into the eligibility for federally guaranteed student loans. Thus, student rental housing has become a large part of the crushing costs facing students who will face years to pay off these accumulated debts. This fact should add context to the decisions that the city has made about opening the door to multibillion-dollar firms that extract escalating rents from students to yield extraordinary profits for their investors. Both the hub on East Huron and Willard Tree on Plymouth Road are operated by American Student Companies, which is owned by Blackstone, one of the world's largest asset management companies. The new 15-story luxury student high-rise at South State and Packard, and the 16-story tower on East William is being developed by Core Spaces, but the funding and ownership of these buildings will include Blue Owl Capital, another massive New York-based asset management company. The cost that these out-of-scale developments impose on residents and the community does not matter to asset managers as long as profits accrue. They do not care about the impact of a 17-story building on the Towesley Children's House or that the building is 10 times the current zoning and that it does not qualify for a PUD or meet our sustainability goals. They do not care that this profit-driven business model is increasing the debt burden on student renters. These developments stress both physical and social infrastructure, and the city's willingness to weaken and allow exceptions to land-use rules only accommodates and underwrites the profitability of these profit-driven ventures that are reshaping Ann Arbor. If council is willing to cede Church Street to LV Collective, I want to know why you're so eager to sell both the city and the students to investors who have no other interests than extracting out-of-scale return on investments from these outsized and out-of-place buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Gerstein.
Hello, I am Mark Gerstein. I live at 1321 Forest Court, and I'm here to urge you to listen to and respect the judgments of the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and the many citizens of Ann Arbor who signed petitions submitted to you. All of them recommended denial of the application for a PUD for the site at 7-Eleven Church Street. The surprising and surprisingly lopsided no vote of the Planning Commission and its multitude of reasons concerning the project's size, its character, its large carbon footprint, its opportunistic and misguided exploitation of the PUD process, and that it provided no public benefit should be listened to. Likewise, you should heed the careful, thoughtful, and extensive analysis of Alexis Delio and the Planning Department staff recommending denial. You have a professional planning staff with expertise and experience. You should listen to them, and you should hear the opposition of the Towesley Children's House parents and staff worried about the dangers posed by the project during construction and its everlasting impact on the light and air of the children's playyards abutting the site. And listen, too, to the many Ann Arbor citizens who expressed their opposition to the 7-Eleven Church Street PUD in the petition they signed, and that was submitted to all of you. The proposal is in total violation of the zoning created by the city in the recent past, establishing D1 and D2 zones with step downs to preserve the integrity of the surrounding R4C zones. On Church Street, D1 zoning stops at Willard. This proposal is an attempt to use the PUD process to totally circumvent and bust open the current zoning. This is not how city planning should be done, nor should the city remake its previously-approved planning documents through such single-site spot zoning. And zoning certainly shouldn't be done by how much a developer can be compelled or encouraged to kick into the Affordable Housing Fund or into a project for downtown public restrooms. I'm referring, in the latter, to the original proposal of the developers to contribute money to the downtown public restrooms, and this was, according to Brad Moore, the suggestion of our city administrator. There is no discernible public benefit in this PUD proposal. Any housing crisis in Ann Arbor will not in any way be addressed by this proposal, which will solely be marketed for high-rent student housing. I strongly urge you to reject this PUD proposal for 7-Eleven Church Street.
Thank you. Next up, we have Adam Jiskovic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. This is Adam Jiskovic calling from the Fourth Ward. I'd like to start out by briefly touching on DC1, 2, 3, and 4. I read Deputy Administrator Fornier's report, "A New Approach to Economic Development", and found myself newly hopeful for the future of our city. The reforms suggested by the report and the proposals in front of you tonight will go a long way toward addressing many of the issues that keep turning up in our city: the housing crisis, the climate crisis, possible budget shortfalls, the need for placemaking, and more. I hope to see you pass these tonight, and I hope to see more of the recommendations from the report come forward in the future. For many of the same reasons I support those reforms, I also support the development at 7-Eleven Church and disagree with staff and Planning Commissioner's recommendation of denial. There's a lot more than 250 people living in Ann Arbor. We have an elected democratic government not ruled by petition. As a taxpayer and as a voter and as a born-and-raised Ann Arborite, I urge you to listen to the entire community, not a handful of people living in multimillion-dollar luxury, single-family houses who signed a petition. This site is surrounded by other buildings of comparable height and density in an area dominated by dormitories and other dense student housing, student hangouts, and academic buildings. This density is absolutely appropriate for the surrounding area. Contrary to the prior speaker, this is not spot zoning. We are in a housing crisis with high demand for housing and not enough supply. This will add a significant number of units to our local housing supply. That in itself is a benefit to our city. As we know, the University of Michigan has added many students to our population without providing enough housing for them. That need will have to be filled by the private market, and that won't happen unless council approves such developments in the appropriate locations, which this site absolutely is. The location is easily walkable to campus and to local businesses that are frequented by students. It's half a block from Rick's world-famous Bar Valley and kitty-corner from Pizza House, after all. It's right in the thick of things in terms of student living, so residents will likely not need to drive much. This is great, because we're also in a climate crisis and, as such, are trying to cut vehicle miles traveled in half. I love that they are unbundling parking. I hope that more developments follow suit. Getting these residents close to their destinations and out of their cars helps our A2-Zero goals as well as our Vision Zero goals. Furthermore, this building would pay more than $7 million into our Affordable Housing Fund. This will approximately match the annual revenue from our
Thirty seconds.
...doubling the money going into affordable housing in the year we receive that contribution. The Housing Commission can leverage those funds into more wonderful developments like 121 Catherine, the old Y lot at Fifth and William, and other projects coming down the pike. They'll also be contributing to parks and public restrooms. The benefits to the city are manifest. Please vote yes on C1 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hank Barry.
Hi, Hank, can you hear me?
Yep, yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Hank Barry, Fourth Ward. I'm against the proposal. This proposed zoning change to allow yet another towering mega-luxury student rental building should not be approved. I think it's a measure of how dysfunctional our city government has become that we have to say out loud, "The council should not approve a development the planners have rejected." So we'll see where we're going as all part of the ongoing negotiations, that the developer's proposal should be seen only as the basis for further discussions with the Planning Department. They will say that surely the developer can be forced to provide assurances, size reductions, and money in order to receive the zoning change. The problem with this approach, at least from a process perspective, is that the public has no role in these non-public negotiations. They inevitably will lead to developments that reflect primarily the interests of the developers and perhaps the city officials, not the public. Recent history with 721 Forest and the proposed Sports Illustrated Hotel shows that the city, and I have to include most of the administration, she's no problem with carrying on these negotiations for pub zoning changes out of the view of the public. There's nothing special about 7-Eleven Church Street. It could happen anywhere in the city under the current system, because the Planning Department is ignored, and developers are seen as more important than residents. Incidentally, the developer here, Austin, Texas-based LV Collective, has luxury student buildings in Atlanta, one called the Rambler Atlanta, 798 beds. At Austin, that's the Rambler Austin, that's 796 beds. The rejected proposal is for 1,011 beds. This implies that the developer's economics will work for them at 796 beds, and of course, you will see a number just like that in their revised proposal. But that's not the point. The city should not continue negotiating on this. As Lisa so eloquently put it, "The city is subsidizing the university's expansion." The university should build the housing for its students. The city has no compelling reason to approve this zoning change or facilitate the construction of yet another mega-student rental building. Another's enough, and Ann Arbor has had enough. The city can and should just say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Brian Chambers.
Good evening. My name is Brian Chambers. I'm a 40-year resident of Ann Arbor and have raised my children here, and I currently live with my wife in the Third Ward. I'm here to speak in favor of the four economic development resolutions before council today, including DC1, to creation of the Office of Economic Development, and DC2 on housing affordability, DC3 on sustainability, and DC4 on placemaking and increasing the tax base. The city administrators, I understand, can also offer additional provisions to strengthen these resolutions. So they're written on a number of them. So if there are items missing, like on sustainability for passive house design, better than net zero, by the way, I would look to the city administrator to consider those and bring those proposals back to council. There's ample opportunity. There's ample opportunity. Some of these have two-year time horizons to develop. Economic development as conducted by the city of Ann Arbor may be best characterized as ad hoc and reactive to date, especially when it comes to the city's role in responding to development projects submitted by developers. A proactive approach that prioritizes our city objectives for housing affordability, sustainability, and placemaking is clearly focused on the well-being of current and future residents, as well as commuters who travel in and out of Ann Arbor on a daily basis. Housing affordability is an important component of economic development. It impacts several levers of growth, including business formation. Housing affordability also impacts location decisions of both potential employees and employers. Higher-cost housing can trigger productive people to leave markets and may limit the ability of lower-income households to enter our local market. Higher levels of regulation are now well-known to drive up the cost of housing. On this basis, the initiative for economic development outlined in these resolutions is long overdue. Placemaking is probably one of the key elements of this economic development initiative, and I encourage you to consider placemaking for each of the TC-1 districts, as well as the downtown district that includes two regional transit centers, ripe for increased housing, for employment, for work, and for leisure activities. City land acquisition with objectives for low- and middle-income housing can leverage the style of co-development being considered for the Y lot at 350 South for both low-income and middle-income housing, as I understand one of the proposals entails. This could be leveraged for more land acquisition and use land trust or just retaining in public ownership to have those tax-producing properties as well. Even though they're on city land, if the housing itself is commercialized, it can be taxed. The Ann Arbor area has grown over the past 20 years primarily due to the U of M's increased staff and students. In fact, the U of M's growth exceeded that of the whole county over the past 20 years. If the U of M continues its growth trajectory even at half its prior rate, we can expect 32,000 people, employees, and students by 2050.
Thank you.
If more housing is not developed within the city, then it'll develop outside of the city, leading to more congestion --
Thank you.
-- sprawl, and property taxes going to other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
How long you gave him after his talk was over?
You'll have your time. Next up, we have Edward Vialmetti.
Hello, my name is Edward Vialmetti. I live in the Lower Burns Park neighborhood in the Fourth Ward. I would like to speak on the consent agenda for the parking, not parking, paving project, which, as I understand, it includes a sidewalk along Page Avenue. This is a very good thing to see. Page is widely used by residents and neighbors, even some faraway neighbors, as a low-stress, bicycle-friendly route to go from the south side of town towards the center of town. And I've actually had a successful route that takes me all the way, would take me all the way from downtown to the new bicentennial park at the Southeast Area Park, using a combination of routes between parks and the freeway overpass through Mary Beth Doyle Park. I would love to see the city use more of its paving funds towards these sidewalk and bicycle path improvements, given that those sorts of improvements generally have a lifespan that's much longer than the typical street pavements, because the burden on the streets is so much lower from the lighter-weight vehicles and pedestrians. In conclusion, I am hopeful that the city will continue to expand out its bicycle paths and bicycle routes, and hopefully, either in this project or in future projects, do better to sign those routes so that not only can we get around downtown on a bicycle, but it's also obvious and evident how to get to downtown from the various neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have John Godfrey.
Good evening, thank you. My name is John Godfrey, and I'm a resident of Ann Arbor. I regret that a number of members of the council are absent this evening, particularly since there are at least a couple of very significant items on your agenda, but no doubt the reasons that keep them away are exigent. At council's last meeting, I asked why the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan meets behind closed doors and why no minutes are kept of their discussions. In an email response, Councilmember Dish kindly pointed out that the Steering Committee, in actual fact, does no steering at all, and that its role is less central than the impression that I may have formed, according to Lisa. Rather, the committee's apparent role is merely to advise about how to, quote, "approach public conversations." How can this be? Last fall, more than 100 residents applied in good faith to serve on this committee, whose advertised purpose included, quote, "Assisting and conducting research, checking assumptions, and providing insight and feedback into the community, and helping validate values, recommendations, and concepts presented in the plan." Planning Director Leonard introduced names of new committee members by saying, "I was really blown away by just the expertise of the applications we received. There were many qualified people. Surely, the number, diversity, and quality of these applications is proof of strong public interest in helping to assure a plan that best aligns with the shared aspirations of all residents of Ann Arbor." Councilmember Dish also noted that the Steering Committee is not an authoritative body, but almost none of the city's 26 boards and committees hold independent authority. And yet, these various bodies make public minutes of their meetings available, and nearly all are visible on CTN or via e-meetings. So why the exception for the Steering Committee? In 1991, council adopted a resolution that all boards, task forces, and committees should be open to the public. Council reaffirmed this commitment when it passed a resolution that e-meetings meet this 30-year-old requirement. How should the public understand council's resistance to open Steering Committee meetings? Could it be that the council has no real interest in broad public engagement in shaping the Comprehensive Plan, and that the role of the Steering Committee is simply to legitimize predetermined outcomes? Ann Arbor's strength comes from its residents' shared commitment to a vibrant, welcoming, and forward-looking city. But council's decision to keep these meetings out of public view cannot but help raise questions about possible underlying motives. Public office carries the burden of responsibility to the public. Transparency safeguards, participatory democracy, these principles have special urgency this year. And so I ask again that, as is required for every city committee, the council direct that meetings of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee be made public and that their minutes be published. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jeff Crockett.
Thank you for letting me speak. I know it's over the time limitation, probably. My name is Jeff Crockett, and I have some happy news. I serve as the Chair of the History Subcommittee for the Bicentennial. Our committee work represents a remarkable collaboration with the following local historic preservation groups and organizations: the Ann Arbor Historic Foundation, the Washtenaw County Historic Society, Historical Society, the Old Fourth Ward Historic District Association, the Old West Side Association, the Ann Arbor District Library, the Bentley, the Kemp House, and the Cobblestone Farm. Our members include Patrick McCauley, Susan Weinberg, Amy Cantu, Christine Bremer, Tom Stilberg, Christine Crockett, Patty Smith, Karen Jania, Bev Willis, Grace Shackman, Fran Wright, Alan Haber, Pat Austin, Michelle McClellan, Norm Tyler, Ellen Ramsburg, Ed Rice, Wap John, and Cheryl McKay. We would like to thank Amy Carbo of Destination Ann Arbor, who has posted our events and timeline on the A2 Bicentennial website. Collectively, we have spent many hundreds of hours creating events and working on proposals for the Ann Arbor Bicentennial. The Ann Arbor Smart Tours project is incredible. If you haven't gone there, take a look. And you can take a look by Googling "A2 Smart Tours," which will take you to the library website that will list all of the contributors. Norm Tyler is the Chair, Tom Stilberg is the co-chair. Thanks to Andrew McLaren for uploading all 15 tours covering 177 sites to the library website. The A2 Bicentennial Birthday Celebration is, I'm pleased to announce, on May 25, and we hope you all come. It is cosponsored by the Bicentennial History Subcommittee and the Library Green Conservancy Board. It includes A2 Smart Tour kickoff, a Bicentennial Quiz Contest, speeches reflecting the diversity of Ann Arbor on the topic "What Does a Bicentennial Mean to Me?", refreshments, and a birthday cake. Music will be provided by Ralph McKee Blues Band. This event is being coordinated with one held on the library lot by Alan Haber. The Bicentennial Multiple Choice Quiz has evolved from a trivia test into a project to celebrate the diversity of our past and share the contributions of some long-forgotten Ann Arborites. The contributors include Jeff and Christine Crockett, Susan Weinberg, Norm and Eileen Tyler, Bev Willis, Shirley Beckley, Tom Stilberg, Patty Smith, Michelle McClellan, Heidi Metzger, Julie Ritter, Tracy Vanduzen, Lynn Borsette, Peter Eckstein, Kitty Kahn, Alan Haber, Andy Crockett, Amy Citu, Elmo Morales, Dr. Louie Shalabi, Polly Pan, Artemis Leontes, Vasilius Lambropoulos, Claire Kinberg, Elizabeth Bishop, Andrew McClellan, and Eleanor Crown. Truly a diverse representation of people who provided input to this. I am pleased to report that we have reached our goal of 200 questions. Starting May 25, the quiz will be rolled out with 10 questions posted each week on the A2 Bicentennial website at the website. But thank you very much. Hope you show up. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Having reached the conclusion of our 45-minute public comment reserved time for the beginning of the meeting, we will continue on with the agenda and circle back around to remaining public commenters at the end of our meeting. Next up, we have communications from council. Do we have communications? Councilmember Watson.
As part of my continuing commitment to constituent engagement, I'll be hosting a coffee hour on Sunday, April 21, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at Panera Bread on Washtenaw. Please come with questions and comments, and I'll also be joined by Ward 2 candidate John Malik. Thank you.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I don't know how to address you. Councilmember Redina is sitting in for Mayor Taylor. I just also wanted to announce that Cynthia Harrison and I will be having a quarterly coffee hour on Wednesday, April 4, at 6 p.m. at the Ann Arbor District Library. And that's all I want to say for now.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. I wanted to let folks know about a resident participation meeting for a Ward 4 proposed development. This is for a 225-unit development next to Whole Foods on Ann Arbor Celine Road. The meeting is Thursday, April 4, from 6:00 to 7:30 at venue at 1919 South Industrial. This proposal is seeking a rezoning. Currently, the space is zoned office, and they are seeking to have it rezoned R4E residential. So again, the meeting is Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional communications from council? Councilmember Son.
I'd like to say something really quickly about absences here on council and the challenges that folks face personally in their own personal lives, sometimes to make it here when children, spouses, or they themselves are ill. My father was in critical condition two weeks ago, and I felt the love and support from colleagues here and their grace when they said that it would have been fine if I didn't show up today, but I did. And I know my colleagues would want to be here, too, if they could be. So I just wanted to say thanks for -- this is a group that cares about community and for each other every day, and they demonstrate that in more ways than here on CTN or with constituents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further communications from council? For my part, I would also like to announce an upcoming coffee hour with Councilmember Gazi Edwin on April 21 at 10 a.m. We will be at the Mallett's Creek branch of the Ann Arbor District Library, and we'll have Chief Anderson with us as a special guest for an opportunity for members of the public to meet him. I would also like to request confirmation of the following appointment that was presented to the City Council at the March 18 regular session to the Downtown Development Authority, Kim Mays. May I have a motion? Cornell, and seconded by Councilmember Ackman, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. I would also like to recommend the following nomination for your consideration at our next meeting. It would be to the Downtown Development Authority, Elizabeth Berry. We now have the consent agenda before us. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Watson, and seconded by Councilmember Dish, is there discussion of the consent agenda? Councilmember Dish.
I don't want to pull anything. I just wanted to mention how excited I am to see CA 14, which, if we approve it, will grant $475,000 from the Community Climate Action Millage to the Ann Arbor Housing Development Corporation to support installation of renewable energy systems, including solar readiness and geothermal for 121 East Catherine. This is showing that we are having collaboration between our affordability staffs and the Office of Sustainability and Innovation, our sustainability staff, on the city projects for affordable housing that we're putting forward, and I'm pleased about this and happy to see this consent agenda item.
Further, Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. I wanted to draw just attention to a couple of things that I am excited about. One is a contract for the Seventh and Greenview Improvements Project. This has been a really long time coming, and I know that there were a lot of cycles of community input to make this project better. It's not only a water main replacement, stormwater detention, and road resurfacing, but both of these streets are also designated as all-ages-all-abilities network streets. And as they exist right now, they're very wide, and residents have long complained about speeding, so they are planning to narrow the roads, make some of the sidewalks much wider, and also add bumpouts. The other thing I wanted to draw attention to was something that I think was brought up in the public comment, new sidewalk installation in Ward 4 on Page Avenue from Ash to Harps. This is a street without sidewalks. I know that this has been a source of frustration for a lot of people that live in that area. There were petition signatures collected, a lot of work done to make this happen. Would like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Iyer, because I know she had a big role in that. So happy to see these two things move forward. Thanks.
Councilmember Watson.
I'd like to make a few quick comments on CA 8 and CA 11. On CA 8, of note to Ward 2, I'm happy to see right-of-way mowing and brush clearing along Fuller Road and along Glazier Way. This is important for walkers and bikers and drivers who traverse this area. In addition, on CA 11, it's good to see resurfacing work of the shared-use asphalt path along Glazier Way and Earhart Road. That path has deteriorated significantly, and this has been a frequent ask for residents in the King School neighborhood. I encourage residents to see further street construction plans at atugov.org/A2Streets. Thank you.
Further discussion of the consent agenda? All those in favor? Opposed? The consent agenda is approved with eight councilmembers present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement for CA 4, CA 9, CA 11, CA 12, and CA 13. We now come to public hearing. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to City Council and to the community about a specific subject matter, the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, you need not have signed up in advance, but your comments must relate to the topic of the hearing on the agenda. Speakers will have three minutes to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. Our clerk will alert speakers when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our public hearing today is public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Open Space and Parkland Preservation of Title III of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at the public hearing?
Mayor Protem, I see no one with their hand raised.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We now have before you the work session minutes of March 11, 2024, and the regular session minutes of March 11, 2024. We now have before you the work session minutes of March 11th, 2024, and the regular session meeting minutes of March 18th, 2024. Moved by, Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Is there any discussion of the minutes? All in favor? Opposed? The minutes are approved. Now come to ordinances on second reading. B1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Open Space and Parkland Preservation of Title III of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by, Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Dish, is there discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
I don't have a ton to add from last time, but I did want to once again extend my appreciation to staff who answered a lot of questions surrounding this for the first two readings, and they just did a lot of work to clarify things and tighten things up, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Further discussion? For my part, I just want to echo that. I know that this has been a long process for both staff and for members of the Greenbelt and Parks Commissions, and just want to thank them for their continued work on all of this and for their thoughtful amendments to this process as they heard feedback from members of the community and members of this council, and look forward to approving this tonight. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is approved. C1, an ordinance to amend the zoning map, being a part of Section 5.10.2 of Chapter 55 of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Rezoning of 1.06 acres from R4C multifamily residential district to PUD planned unit development, 711 church PUD zoning and supplemental regulations. Moved by, Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Iyer, is there discussion? Councilmember Dish.
I want to amend it. I -- Councilmember Dish, want to amend it? I don't know. I've never done this before, the amendment thing. You should have language. I send it to you. I don't know if the clerk needs to -- Mr. Gerhardt, you have an email from me earlier.
Could you speak up, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll make sure this is in front of my -- thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Oh, do I? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, do they need the text?
It's coming.
Okay. Okay. Do I need to read the text?
It might be helpful to read the --
Okay. So I move five amendments to the ordinance and supplemental regulations and a rather -- well, yeah. So Amendment 1 is to replace --
Councilmember?
Sorry.
Just to -- I think we should take these as separate amendments, so.
Oh, okay. So one at a time, and then we'll vote on them? Okay. Thank you. So the First Amendment is to replace Section 4, PUD Regulations, Letter E, Sustainability, Point 1, LEED, with LEED Gold. Building shall achieve the gold level of the U.S. Green Building Council Leadership in Energy Environmental Development Certification for New Construction, Version 4.0 or newer. Proof of registration is required at the time of building permit issuance, and documentation of certification shall be provided within two years of issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. If the project fails to provide written certification of compliance within two years of issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, penalty and/or enforcement provisions specified in the development agreement shall apply.
Is there a second? Councilmember Iyer, is there discussion of the amendment?
Yeah, I mean, the petitioner needs Version 4.0, and we specified "or newer" because these things get updated, because the current 4.1 isn't set up for their building typology. And staff wants to make it clear that LEED certification often requires longitudinal studies, and so it's not something that can be given at the time even that the building is occupied. And, you know, the initial certificate of occupation is issued, and so we need them to do the longitudinal studies and show that they have indeed achieved LEED certification, and we need a way to enforce if they fail to do so. And so that's what this amendment provides.
Thank you. Is this amendment friendly to the body? It is friendly. Councilmember, you have the floor.
Okay, so I go on to the next amendment now? All right. So the next amendment is to strike Section 4, PUD Regulations G, Architectural Design and Materials, Number 2, from the ordinance, or Architectural Design and Materials 2, that says materials, from the ordinance. And the ordinance had specified that --
Is there a second to that?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Councilmember Watson, thank you.
I'm really sorry. So the ordinance had specified that the project should follow the downtown design or downtown materials, and that should never have been in there, because this project has always envisioned that it would use an insulation product called EFIS as part of its building materials in order to achieve the highest efficiency possible.
Councilmember Watson.
Just a point on the EFIS cladding. It's my understanding that the reason it was -- is sort of forbidden in the downtown design standards is because, I guess, in the old days, it was -- gave -- in an older version of the material, it gave sort of, for lack of a better word, a West Coast styling to it. And now with advances in the material, it doesn't necessarily convey any sort of architectural style, and so this insulation has come a long way, and it's necessary to achieve the environmental goals here.
Is this amendment friendly to the body? Councilmember.
I believe it's friendly. I just wanted to clarify on this piece. I understand the rationale behind including it, but I'm curious what the implications could be from -- it's just the materials component, not the design guidelines otherwise, right?
It's just the materials component. Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't think I was clear.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Now, is this friendly to the body? It is. Councilmember, you still have the floor.
Thank you. Amendment 3 would modify Section 4, PUD Regulations B, Area Height and Placement. Number 2, we would strike from the second sentence of that section, 17 stories and, so that it reads, "The maximum permitted building height shall be 230 feet."
Seconded by Councilmember Song, is there discussion? Is that amendment friendly to the body? It is friendly. Councilmember Dish.
The -- oops. Oh, yeah. The Fourth Amendment is add to Section 4, PUD Regulations E, Sustainability, a new geothermal requirement as follows. Geothermal technologies. The project will integrate ground-source heat exchange technology into the building's HVAC system to facilitate 8% or 642 MBH of the building's total MBH load. Additionally, the pumps for this heat exchange system will be connected to the backup generators to offer these areas of the building as emergency tenant warming spaces during powder -- power outages.
Is there a second? Councilmember Cornell, further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
I'm just hoping you can explain this change a little bit more.
Yes. So originally, the building didn't have a geothermal element, and essentially, what they are offering is a use of geothermal technologies to heat common areas of the building that would be able to provide a shelter-in-place area in the case of a power outage, and they're proposing to heat those areas or cool them with geothermal technology. And should the geothermal technology not be adequate or fail, this would be connected to the backup gas generator that the building will have, so there would always be the ability to shelter in place.
Is this amendment friendly to the body? It is friendly. Councilmember Dish.
And then Amendment 5 is in the section of the supplementary regulations that talks about public art, and we will change the little point II, the value of the art project being at least $50,000. And strike the rest of the sentence. The original proposal had been based on a percentage of the total development cost, and we -- the developer asked to reduce that to $50,000.
Is there --
Second?
Is there a second? Councilmember Cornell, is there discussion? Councilmember Cornell.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Dish for reaching out through my work at the Art Center. I have a lot of experience working with art and public projects and what budgets for those might look like, and it was a really substantive conversation that led to this amendment. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is this amendment friendly to the body? Councilmember Ackman.
I'm hoping that someone can speak more to -- and it sounds like someone maybe can -- speak more to the sufficiency of this amount to have something of value in terms of public art. I just don't know. So if staff or somebody else can respond to that, I'd appreciate it.
I'm not staff, can I take that on?
Sure.
So what Councilmember Dish and I talked about was, you know, for projects such as a large mural downtown, you know, a budget for that can be, you know, anywhere between $25,000 and $100,000. But there is definitely a way to add public art to this in a way that is really substantive. So, you know, when the Art Center right now is doing planner boxes downtown, you know, those are less than $1,000 each. So I think that when you look at it holistically and say, this is your budget, versus being super prescriptive around meeting a dollar amount, you get more creative minds to contribute to it and to sort of figure it out. Would I like to see this budget be higher? Of course, of course, I would, because I do, obviously, given my work, value art a lot. But I think if we're talking about it being a public benefit, being something that beautifies that part of the community and creates an impact, that budget is sufficient.
Councilmember Song.
If I recall correctly, our Public Arts Commission is unfunded, so -- and the public artwork that we do have in our capital improvement projects really comes out of, I believe, the general fund or donations, so it wouldn't be unheard of to see this kind of funding come along to improve our public spaces.
Further discussion? All those in favor of Amendment 5? Opposed? Amendment 5 is approved. Back to the original motion. Councilmember Dish, I believe you still have the floor.
Okay, how much time do I have?
We --
Does it start over?
Each of those were counted towards the amendment, correct? Yes.
Right, so I get to start over. All right. So approval of this ordinance will rezon six lots at the southeast corner of Willard Street and Church Street from R4C to PUD, and adopt supplemental regulations to allow a high-rise multifamily building ranging from 12 to 17 stories with 273 apartments. City Planning Commission recommended denial, as did planning staff. City Planning Commission's vote was 2 to 5. The vote was actually closer than it looks on paper, because people really struggled over this. Planning staff --
Wait, they voted?
Planning staff at the Planning Commission meeting stated that this project is not out of character. It's located one block from campus. That, as we heard earlier, is kitty-corner from 19-story university towers. Staff did not say that the project had no benefits. They recognized many benefits. They recommended denial for two reasons. One, because they believed the project's benefits could be achieved through other available zoning districts, and two, they believed the developer needed to offer additional benefits to warrant the additional density. It would be impossible to praise our planning staff too highly for their expertise, their commitment to community values, their precision, and their patience. I value the thoughtful, detailed memo that they provided on this project, and I understand why they reached the conclusion that they did based on what they took into consideration. At this table, it is our job to exercise judgment about the considerations we bring to bear in evaluating a project. The proposed project achieves a valued benefit that is recognized in the city's PUD ordinance. It achieves economy and efficiency in use of land by creating 273 residential units within walking distance of campus. Planning staff and Planning Commission both recognized this benefit, and it is something that many in Ann Arbor urgently want, because economy and efficiency in use of land is the only way to meet our sustainability and affordability goals. There just isn't anywhere to go but up in this city. So let's think about the staff evaluation in this context. If the density of the underlying zoning is 10 dwelling units per acre, then it is undeniable that other zoning categories exist by which a project could achieve greater economy and efficiency of land use. 10 dwelling units per acre is simply not very efficient. So I want to focus us on the benefits and form of the PUD. I want to state at the outset, the project came in initially as a 19-story high-rise. In response to neighborhood concerns and staff advice, the building was redesigned to drop two stories from the north, making it a 17-story building at the north end, and then it was stepped down to 12 stories at the south end. This restructuring was done to reduce shading on Towesley Center. This resulted in a loss of 77 units, which was a 22% reduction of the project's originally proposed density. The project has not achieved net zero, but it will be a primarily electric building. Natural gas use in the district shall be limited to power emergency backup and auxiliary hot water generation only during periods when demand cannot be met by the available electric supply.
Councilmember.
Fine, I can come back later.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Song.
Given that we're the most educated city in America, I thought I'd share some journal articles. Citywide Effects of New Housing Supply: Evidence from Moving Change in the Journal of Urban Economics, January 2023. Supply Shock Versus Demand Shock: The Local Effects of New Housing in Low-Income Areas. Policy Brief Presented at the W.E. Upjohn Institute for Employment Research and Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia, March 2023. Local Effects of Large New Apartment Buildings in Low-Income Areas. A Policy Brief Research in the Review of Economics and Statistics, 2023. Build Baby Build: Housing Submarkets and Effects of New Construction on Existing Rents, 2020. Presented at Urban Affairs Association Conference. Do New Housing Units in Your Backyard Raise Your Rents? Journal of Economic Geography, December 2022. The Economic Implications of Housing Supply. Journal of Economic Perspectives. And then finally, I think a really good piece is the research roundup, The Effect of Market Rate Development on Neighborhood Rents, from February 2021, UCLA Lewis Center for Regional Policy Studies. The takeaway is, I'll quote, "To be clear, this debate is not about whether new housing can reduce housing prices overall. At this point, that idea isn't really in doubt. There's good reason to believe that in regions with high housing demand, building more housing can help keep the prices of existing housing down." Citing numerous individual studies and reviews of dozens more, they conclude that the preponderance of the evidence shows that restricting supply increases housing prices and that adding supply would help to make housing more affordable.
Thank you. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you citing some of those studies. I'm going to follow up something on the same trend. I do want to make sure that I acknowledge, I appreciate folks that are here speaking both in favor and in opposition to this development. I think I wanted to address some of the criticisms, and I think it's right to come and say, why would we be in support of something that our planning staff and Planning Commission had voiced opposition to? And, you know, from the perspective of staff, I think they absolutely made the right decision on this one. They are looking at, you know, what the underlying zoning is here, but that is, as Councilmember Dish mentioned, not necessarily -- But that is, as Councilmember Dish mentioned, not necessarily, we are, we have to look at this from a slightly different perspective. Staff did note within the concept, within their staff report that they, they believe that rezoning to D2 would be appropriate. And so when I'm evaluating whether or not this PUD warrants the community benefits meet, are in line with the increased density that's being requested, I personally am not looking at it from the R4C perspective. I'm looking at it from D2. It's an imperfect, imperfect science. There is no, how much benefit can we get? Where is that level? And that was a long discussion that, that Planning Commission had as well. But from the lens that I'm looking at it, we know that we need more housing. That alone cannot, from my perspective, be the reason that we approve it. But we do need to acknowledge it. And this is not just something that, that we're saying. This is something that the Biden administration has been very clear about demonstrating that we have, I think, 1.5 million few, two little housing units in the United States right now. It's a national shortage. Ann Arbor is not alone. Councilmember Song spoke to sort of the impact of adding additional housing supply on our own local housing crisis, and we need to acknowledge that. But there are additional benefits to this, to this PUD. It's, it is going to be built to lead gold standards. That is something that is not required by our, by our code. And it's a lot of, lot of new units coming in at a much more sustainable level than we could get. The payment in lieu of, is in, is greater than 15% that's required by our ordinance. It's at 17%. And as folks noted in public comment, that amounts to $7 million, which is, equates to what we get in one year. There is public art that's coming in. I think there's been a lot of discussion about the design of our local buildings in downtown. And this is a developer that has come in and said, we want to make sure that we put in something that, that has that, has that benefit. It's going to contribute $250,000 to public restrooms in the downtown. That's huge as well. That is, that's a shortage that, that we've identified. And there's also a very substantial contribution to the Parks Department as well that's, that's we often find with developments. But nevertheless, that is, that is a public benefit as well. And so looking at the lens through which I am, I might speak to it more, but this does provide the community benefit that we need.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. I guess I wanted to speak to some of the, I mean, several of my colleagues have already talked about a housing crisis and our need to respond to it. And I heard several of the public commenters speak to the fact that U of M should be housing these people and that this won't address the housing crisis at all. And I guess I find it shocking, given the headlines that I've been reading. So just some recent ones. U of M struggles to meet students' rising demand for housing. U of M students live in lounges due to housing shortage. Students aren't guaranteed housing after their freshman year on campus. They have record-breaking enrollment numbers, and many students are left to secure accommodations on their own. The director of housing at U of M said, demand for student housing has continued to exceed just supply. So he's saying for the past few years, demand has consistently outpaced the number of rooms available for the returning students, and this year was no exception. Yet they keep admitting more students. You see people commenting on Reddit, "I'm so sick of the housing crisis here. I'm sick of being forced to pay obscene amounts of money for old housing with mold and other house, health hazards." So, you know, I think this body is left to respond to the fact that U of M's student body is growing, and we have to respond to that. This is a housing development that is right there, walking distance to where they're going to class, walking distance to a bus if they've got classes on North Campus, you know, 1,000 beds. I don't understand how we can look at this picture and not say that, one, U of M is not meeting the supply. So to pretend that we can rely on them to do so is, is not happening. And to do nothing, I think, is really irresponsible because it's leading to things like a $6,000 waiting list fee for housing here, for crappy student housing. So, you know, I'm determined to do something in response to this. And maybe, you know, the choices that we have are imperfect. I'm certainly sympathetic to construction disturbances that you're having. And if people are coming before the times they should, that should be dealt with through our noise ordinance, certainly. But I plan to vote yes to move this forward to the next reading.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. I'll be brief, but I am also going to be voting yes tonight on this. It has been stated by my colleague, Councilmember Ackman. I mean, reading those headlines is, is really jarring. The numbers are actually, over the past dozen years or so, U of M has added 13,000 students and only 1,000 beds on campus. It feels like there's been a lot of construction of student housing, but the actual number is only about 5,000 beds. So we are currently about 6,000 beds short just for students. That doesn't even get into all the other housing needs that we have from employees, workers that have been added to the city over the years. And I'll get more into that later when we talk about the package of resolutions that are coming to address this issue. But it would be really difficult to vote no on this. And then a minute, you know, two, two agenda items later, declare that we have a housing crisis and that housing supply and, and building new housing is our number one goal. We need this new housing, and I like to remind people that, you know, the more of this housing that's built, and it is, it will be used, even though it's very expensive, it will be used. We have a rental vacancy rate that's close to zero right now. The more we can provide and, and allow the market to provide that housing that's needed, the less pressure there will be on our neighborhoods to convert more current single-family homes into housing for students.
Can we please have some order? Thank you.
So for all of those reasons, I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind members of the public, please do not interject during council comments. Thank you. Councilmember Dish.
Thank you so much, colleagues, for adding to the list of reasons or a list of benefits of this project and for providing so much context for the reason why a project like this is needed and will contribute to affordability, even if it is not in itself affordable for 60% AMI, which is certainly none of our student housing is there. I wanted to say that, just a couple of other things of the benefits of this project. I wanted to emphasize that there's limited automobile parking, which is indicative of a building that has a high walking score, which is what we want, people to be able to walk to where they need to go. It also has generous bike parking. There is one bike parking space per unit, 10 outdoor space for visitors, and a minimum of two bicycle parking spaces shall accommodate cargo bicycles, and a minimum of 28 will be capable of recharging electric bicycles. And these are other sustainability elements that the developer built into this project in order to make it clear that they are working very hard to bring us a project that aligns with our goals and a project whose benefits warrant the density increase that they are asking for. I think we've, yeah, I think, yeah, it's great. So thank you.
Councilmember Song.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Ackman for speaking to the experience of students. Your students are not strangers to our community. As someone who came from a family who could only afford one year of living in the dorms and then commuting for the remainder of my time here at the university while working at Polio's, serving you amazing Italian food, while working at Eastern Accents and making your bibimbap and your espressos, while working at the undergraduate library and finding your journal articles, students are here to do what they can to finish their education, support their families in some way, and make do. But this housing crisis, this situation where students are forced to commute, it's been a long time since I've been an undergraduate student. That was 1995 to 1998. And to think that incoming students in 2024 have to have the same experience because the city hasn't caught up to this demand, and yet we all wear U of M gear, we're alumni, we're proud of the school when we win a national championship, and yet we're surprised that people want to live here, work here, go to school here, that people want to send their children here. They're here. So thank you for recognizing who the students are, their challenges, and how potentially, if we do our job really well, not only providing housing, but figure out economic development, they can become taxpayers like myself or your future council member. So your future neighbors are also contributing towards our tax base. Considering that our schools are, are facing a $25 million shortfall, that annual money, which about 30% of your local taxes goes to our public schools, will go towards our future, our current dilemma right now. So those students are your neighbors, they're your community members, they're your fellow tax members, taxpayers.
Thank you. Councilmember Briggs.
I just wanted to make sure that I sort of address each of the sort of critiques that came up during public comment. One of the other comments that was raised was sort of, I think, quote was, "Why are we selling our city and students to developers?" And I think it's, it's, I've spent my life working for nonprofits and had a different trajectory, and it's easy to vilify developers and the development teams that come in. But I would, would like folks to challenge themselves to think about, what funding model could you concoct that would allow anybody to build 1,000 units of, of, of housing in our community that would not have large investments and investment teams behind them? It's, it's, to me, inconceivable that that's probably going to happen. It's the reality of building housing in communities and building a lot of housing. Would I like to see perhaps a, a different scenario in a magical world? Sure. But I, we have, we have a reality that we have to deal with right now. We have a drastic shortage of housing in our community. And I would love to sit down with folks, and if you've got great ideas about how we get ourselves out of this without building more housing, as quick, I would love to hear those answers. It's not, there aren't easy, there are, you know, there aren't easy solutions to this that, that make everybody feel happy about our community staying the same. We simply have to, to, to build the housing, to, to house the people that are living here. And then the other issue was around construction. And I understand as well and respect the disruption that, that construction can cause in neighborhoods. But the, the reality is, is that something is going to be built here. Staff has already noted that they support something to the D2 standard. That's, that's a fairly substantial development at this site. So in terms of the disruption that's going to occur, that is, that, that is simply a part of this process. I do think there was something that was noted around the process of, of tearing down the houses and what was brought forward. And I do plan to, to investigate that a little bit more to make sure I understand if our processes were appropriately followed. But in terms of construction, that's, that's happening.
For my part, I'm also going to support moving this forward to second reading tonight. I do want to thank members of our community who have already reached out to us, both in support and opposition to the project, who've signed the petition that we received. However, I also had the privilege of attending Governor Whitmer's State, the State Address earlier this year as a guest of State Senator Sue Schink. And I'd like to briefly quote what the governor had to say on the issue of housing during her speech. She said, quote, "Right now, too many families spend more than half of their income on their rent or their mortgage. Our housing stock is old, and nearly half of all the units in Michigan were built before 1970, and young people cite housing affordability as one of their top concerns. In other words, the rent is too damn high, and we don't have enough damn housing. Our response will be simple: build baby build." She went on to issue a direct call to communities like ours and said, quote, "Our local partners are getting it done, too. In 2024, let's keep going. Build more of every kind of housing. We, as a community, must answer the governor's call. While this council majority has during my tenure been working diligently to address our ongoing housing crisis to the best of our ability at the local level, as the governor noted in her address, the housing crisis is a statewide challenge, and it requires all of our communities working together to address it. This is not a perfect project, but it is a good one. 7-Eleven Church would add 273 new units of housing and over 1,000 beds immediately adjacent to central campus. It would do so in an already student-heavy neighborhood on property that is kitty-corner from a 12-story student apartment building and directly across the street from a university dorm, at a time when the university is gobbling up property and removing it from our tax rolls. It has significant sustainability features, limited onsite car parking, and abundant bicycle parking for student residents to get around campus. Finally, it will add over $7 million, as has been noted, to our Affordable Housing Fund, which is nearly the amount our affordable, our affordable housing mileage generates in an entire year. And this is on top of additional tax revenue that this property will generate annually to invest in city services and to help address our local schools' budgets in the future. Finally, as much as we might like to compel the university to build enough housing for their students, we do not have that authority. We have a responsibility to provide for residents who reside here, regardless of who brings them here. If members of our community would like U of M to provide more housing, as we might as well, I also encourage you to speak to your elected Board of Regents, statewide officials who meet right here in Ann Arbor. Building significant amounts of new housing doesn't happen overnight or by waving a magic wand. It takes a lot of time, a lot of planning, a lot of resources, and a lot of will. It also takes quite a bit of luck, especially in the middle of a housing crisis, when all of those things come together to provide our community with the opportunity to house an additional 1,000 people. We do not have the luxury of taking our foot off the gas, waiting around, and hoping to approve major housing like this via a different process at a different time, maybe at a different location, adding more time, more expense, and more uncertainty to the equation, and almost guaranteeing that this simply becomes another opportunity lost. So in moving this forward tonight, I choose to answer Governor Whitmer's call. Let's keep going. Let's build more housing of every kind, and let's continue to confront our housing crisis with the only real solution available to us: more housing.
Is there further discussion? Councilmember Watson.
I appreciate residents coming down and both describing their neighborhood, talking about how it's changed, talking about the fact that, just posing the question as to why we're building more and more student housing. And over my time in, short time in city government here, that's been one of the most common questions. In fact, when council members knocked on my door about four years ago, I was asking the same question of why are we seeing so many high-rises built and why isn't the university building more dorms? And thankfully, with, you know, the comprehensive plan consultants, we have some answers. The consultants have reported that since 1970, the growth of the University of Michigan student population has accounted for 75% of population growth in the city. That has to be the primary reason that these projects are getting proposed and financed. And I, you know, I appreciate the resident who, you know, was asking questions about, you know, the role of, the role of private equity, the role of housing as an investment vehicle. Solutions there are going to have to be, come from the federal level in terms of regulation and oversight. But fundamentally, the, you know, that is the current state of how, how projects are being financed, and we have to meet the need. A project I remember quite briefly, quite viscerally, I guess, is, is the Foundry Lofts on Division and Huron. There was a lot of consternation in the community when those were proposed. A few years went by, that project went up, and I have a friend who was actually a first-generation Michigan law student, and he ended up living in that apartment during his time at law school. So it really did happen. It became, over, over, over the lifespan of that project, it became more affordable, and it became a useful place for students that are coming to Ann Arbor for the first time. So I hope to see the same trajectory here, and I have no reason to believe it won't.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. C2, an ordinance to amend the sections 5.28.1.b, 5.29.8.a, 5.29.6, and 5.29.8 of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by? Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Is there discussion?
Is there discussion? Oh, actually, I apologize. I believe we have a staff introduction for this. Mr. DeHoney.
We have a staff member that's available to provide answers to questions that we receive.
Good evening, councilmembers. I hope you can hear me well. I think I'm on audio only.
We can.
I am Alexis de Leo. I am Alexis de Leo, a city planner. We've had a question from a council member. The question is, specifically, the staff summary says, "The review process for these amendments revealed additional opportunities for future amendments to change, update, or clarify ordinance language, particularly in the areas of clear compliance thresholds and mitigation measures based on the results of multimodal transportation impact analyses. None are presented at this time, but may be proposed as staff time and resources allow. Can staff explain what's being done with these TIA's, or Transportation Impact Analysis, then?" I will, in responding, I'll point out to you one of the linked files on the agenda. It is File 23-2082, and it is a planning commission file that includes a memo from June 27, 2023, an ORC staff memo on MTIA requirement standards. And that memo offers our diagnosis and commentary on all things related to transportation impact analysis in the Unified Development Code, which are, one, when and how a transportation impact analysis is required. That's in Section 529 E. Two, the criteria for review of a TIA in Section 529 6E. And three, standards for site plan approval overall in Section 529 6C. The proposed ordinance tonight only addresses the first, when and how a TIA is required. But as articulated in that June 27, 2023 memo, there is a lot of room for improvement to the criteria for review of a TIA in particular, which are weak and vehicle-focused, and the approval standards for site plans in general, which do not even address transportation impacts. That is not to say that we're in the wild west right now and operating willy-nilly when we do work with transportation impact analyses or multimodal transportation impact analyses. Your transportation engineers have been taking the adopted goals expressed in Moving Together Toward Vision Zero Comprehensive Transportation Plan, for example, into account in their reviews and recommendations for quite some time. Transportation staff work with developers and applicants on either refining proposed site plan layouts or making commitments to off-site work in the form of adding or removing turn lanes or in-road bicycle facilities, or work at signalized intersections, pedestrian crosswalks, all, for example. And planning staff make it a point to highlight these features in our reports and include them in development agreements. However, to date, this process relies on agreement, compromise, and negotiation, because at the end of the day, there is nothing in the site plan approval standards that requires such. But some councilmembers might recall the resolution to approve the 999 Maiden Lane Site Plan. Side note, that's File Number 23-1024. It was approved on July 17, 2023. And in that, our transportation engineers recommended denial because the project followed the code requirements for required information and review criteria, but did not provide multimodal information or further the goals of Vision Zero. What is before the council tonight is the low-hanging fruit that is essential for clarity and consistency. The next steps will be harder, because although the conceptual work is clear, actually developing a robust set of review criteria and fair standards for approval will take some time and dedicated resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. For those who are following along and maybe didn't read this, I was happy to see this. This actually updates CUDC to reference the 2023 Multimodal Transportation Engineers Transportation Impact Analysis, which is a mouthful, as opposed to the 2020 guide. And in the report, they highlighted some of the differences between this that I think are a positive, even despite the fact that this is the low-hanging fruit. We're not really, we have further steps to take in the future. So it includes sidewalk gap analysis to determine the ability to travel to and from a site as a pedestrian, transit stop and ADA accessibility to and from the site, bicycle and pedestrian quality of level, quality and level of service, and the impacts that the proposed development will have on the safety performance slash outcomes of an intersection or corridor, especially the ones that are located, sorry, especially the locations that are identified in the A2 Moving Together Plan. So, you know, I think this is a positive, because it presents clarity in what's being asked of developers. And it sounds like this is what staff has been pushing people to use anyway. And it gets rid of specifics that are either redundant or confusing, since the details are actually in the guide. You know, the concerns I've had with level of service, which is one component of this vehicle-focused evaluation of developments, is that it places a focus on traffic congestion that I don't think is all that helpful, especially when we're talking about development in the city, where people are, you know, probably being brought closer to their workplaces. So I think this is a positive move. I would like to learn more about how this is being applied and look critically about how we're using certain thresholds. But this seems like a positive move today. Thanks.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. We now come to motions and resolutions. DC1, A Resolution to Direct the Establishment of an Office of Economic Development and Directing the City Administration to Prioritize Housing Development at All Income Levels to Support Housing Affordability, Sustainability, Tax-Based Development, and Placemaking as the City's Strategic Priorities for the Land Development. Moved by Councilmember Ayer, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. So, the four resolutions before us tonight represent a significant milestone in our city's response to our housing crisis. This work began with an initiative I brought to the Economic Development Corporation in 2022, and under the direction of Mr. DeHoney and Mr. Fornier, evolved into the report that council received in December of 2023. Tonight, I hope we will endorse the findings of that report and provide clear direction to the city administrator for implementing its recommendations. This first resolution provides four overarching policy directives, which, taken together, will help create a more equitable and sustainable future for residents of Ann Arbor. The core objectives are to support housing affordability, sustainability in the built environment, placemaking, and tax-based improvements. Ann Arbor is in the midst of a housing crisis decades in the making. Due to the restrictive policies and processes, these recommendations seek to correct. In adopting these resolutions, we will recognize the critical importance of housing affordability and commit to creating an environment where people who work in Ann Arbor can find a place to live here if that is their preference. The body of housing research clearly demonstrates that the laws of supply and demand do apply to housing, which means we need new market rate housing development in addition to city-led affordable housing initiatives. This first resolution also directs the city administrator to establish an Office of Economic Development led by a qualified professional. This office will spearhead efforts such as strategic property acquisition, support for underutilized properties, supervision of major land developments, and small business support, particularly for minority immigrant and women-owned businesses. For far too long, Ann Arbor has left local economic development to the whims of market forces. We are fortunate to be a city that continues to grow despite this. But, as we have seen, lack of intervention has led to our housing crisis, tax-based erosion, and missed opportunities for placemaking and sustainability in development. So while market forces are powerful drivers of economic activity, city-led interventions are essential to address market shortcomings, ensure equitable and sustainable growth, and build a resilient and vibrant community. With these resolutions, the city administrator will be authorized to bring forth any necessary ordinance changes, budget amendments, and resolutions to implement these directives effectively. These resolutions mark a transformational step in leading Ann Arbor forward. We aim to move towards a more inclusive, vibrant community that welcomes new neighbors, who will in turn support our local businesses, schools, community organizations, and who will contribute to funding our local government in order that it may continue providing the excellent city services that our current residents expect and deserve.
Is there further discussion? Councilmember Cornell.
I will be brief, because Councilmember Ayer so very eloquently pointed out the benefits of this. I'm really excited to see all of this come forward. I think one thing that I wanted to just call out is gratitude to city staff for the time that they put into working on this. Councilmember Ayer mentioned that it was several years of research that went into this. Mr. Fornier met with all of us individually. We had multiple working sessions on it. So this is a culmination of a process that I believe has had a significant amount of input, consideration, discussions around, and being able to bring it to the community and get the ball rolling on some of these important initiatives to create economic opportunity here, to make sure that our economy is healthy by being able to support people working in our community, living here, entrepreneurs starting businesses here. Understanding the process of doing that can be really complicated for first-time business owners, for even business owners who've done work in other cities and then come here to find that our restrictions and, you know, processes are onerous and different than other cities. I think some of the findings of that report really did a great job of detailing, illustrating what the opportunities are. And now we have a chance to evaluate them case by case and move forward the ones that align the most with our city's values. And that's what's really exciting to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, I'd like to echo my thanks to staff on this. There's a lot of work that's been put into this, a lot of, appreciate the work sessions to help us understand it better, and the fact that we're, this series of resolutions will help us get a lot more information to be able to make educated decisions as we move forward. I think there's a lot of exciting opportunities. We've seen in our initial budget forecast, kind of with the future potential revenue shortfalls coming in the future. And I think one of the few mechanisms that we have to change that forecast is greater economic development that increases our tax base. I will note that, you know, I am curious to see, as this comes back through the budget process, how this actually plays out in terms of, can we afford this? Can we afford it now? I think it's going to be an important part of the budget conversation. But the only way that we get to have that conversation is to pass these resolutions now.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. I think it's somewhat surprising that we don't have this function in our city right now, given our size and the amount of jobs, you know, being a job center in the state, the fifth-largest city in the state, I believe, right now. But I think also, as Councilmember Briggs alluded to, we shouldn't take lightly adding permanent staff to our general fund. So this is something I kind of asked about, like, how do we kind of think about the cost versus benefit? Understanding, of course, that you need to invest in certain areas in order to grow. So I asked Mr. Fornier earlier today, and he responded, you know, I just basically asked, are we thinking about, like, how we measure cost versus benefit? And he said, "The costs would be offset over time by new economic developments. For instance, one major real estate development would create enough general fund revenue to offset one to two positions in perpetuity for years to come." So this is something I'm going to be, you know, obviously taking a close look at as the budget comes forward. But I think we need to think more strategically and kind of take our future into our own hands instead of being sort of haphazard or expecting things just to come to us. Thanks.
Councilmember Song.
I think this work directly addresses our continual problem with universities' land acquisitions, and how, as they roll out their plans for 2050, there are no promises that U of M will stop acquiring parcels. There's some politeness around it. When they had announced their capital improvement plan for 2050, the very next day, there was news that they had acquired a parcel on Green Road. What I like about this plan is that it directly acknowledges the costs to the city in terms of our tax base, every time U of M does this. And it's an argument for adding to our tax base in a productive way, aside from, why doesn't U of M behave more neighborly, more politely? It's a state entity, a state authority that we cannot tax. It's been a reality for quite some time, and we don't have to wait until 2050 to address that.
Further discussion? For my part, I also want to thank the sponsors for their work on this, Steph. I know that this has been a lot of work that has gone into this over the period, over a period of many months, including a work session, discussions with councilmembers, and then the work that went into these resolutions. I do want to note, I think, one of the things that excites me about this and that I've been trying to kind of wrap my head around, and glad to have staff looking at this as well, is some of the strategic property acquisition that we would be looking at into the future. And I've mentioned to many of you, I hate to bring up a sore subject, but as many of you know, I got to go visit our sister city in Germany. And one of the things that really differentiated their housing market from our own is that the city was a major player in the real estate market, which allowed them to help control some of those housing costs, which allowed them to be competitive, which allowed them to develop these cooperative districts throughout the community. Those are things that we just haven't been able to do because we haven't been thinking about it in the same way. And so I'm excited to see some of how this will play out and see it as it comes back to us. But some of the opportunities that might exist here really, really give me some real great enthusiasm for what might be to come. So, further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DC2, A Resolution to Direct the City Administrator to Implement New Processes and Programs for Housing Development at All Income Levels to Support Housing Affordability. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion. Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I want to just preface my specific remarks about this resolution by saying that we've heard, or we received a number of emails today about people who are very concerned about the details of these ordinances. But we're not at the details yet. These resolutions do not prescribe specific ordinance changes. They direct staff to analyze and return to council with recommendations for ordinance and other changes that will be thoroughly vetted in public and voted on once they have been thoughtfully crafted and considered. And I would urge all of you to sit down for an hour and a half, plan an hour and a half, and read the report, A New Approach to Economic Development. Or you can watch Council TV. We had two working sessions, one in December and one in February, where this report was presented, and we discussed parts of it. So, any way you slice it, you can understand or you can engage with what's in this report, and then you will be even better prepared to engage in a year or so with the results of these resolutions as they come back. So, this resolution is based on the idea that pursuing, not idea, on research that establishes definitively that pursuing development of housing at all income levels is an important component of affordability, because publicly subsidized housing cannot get us all the way there. I am tremendously grateful to live in and serve in a community that would vote to tax itself to advance housing affordability. Only a handful of communities have an affordable housing mileage, but even this is not enough. We need to let there be height where height is right, where it puts people within walking, biking, busing distances of the place they work and study. Even market rate residential high-rises will make the overall price of housing lower. That's not only because new market rate housing reduces the gap between supply and demand, but it's because it creates a kind of generational replacement within the housing market. As newer developments are created, individuals who can afford them move up to this newer, marginally more expensive housing, and the units they vacate become accessible to lower-income renters. Not low-income renters, but lower income than they are renters. You can read about this in a terrific article called "Supply Skepticism" that I will send you if you want it. You can also read John Fornier's A New Approach to Economic Development, pages 17 to 22, which is available all over our website. Sorry. I want to acknowledge- pages 17 to 22, which is available all over our website. Sorry. I want to acknowledge that these excellent resolutions put a lot of work on our staff's table when there is already a lot of work going on. It will be important moving forward to prioritize the various initiatives that we are approving tonight, to assess what our in-house staff has the capacity to achieve, and as others have also mentioned, to see a proposal in the upcoming budget process to fund additional contract hiring, to move this important and urgent work forward. And I am so grateful to be part of this. This is why I ran to do this.
Thank you. Counsel member Ayer.
Thank you. As has been noted earlier tonight, across many communities, housing affordability and housing supply has become a significant challenge, impacting individuals and families from all walks of life. We've had leaders from President Biden to Gretchen Whitmer and down here to our council table, calling for change in our communities to address this critical issue of a housing shortage. At the heart of this crisis lies a fundamental imbalance between supply and demand. And over the years, demand for housing has continued to rise, driven by factors such as population growth, urbanization, and economic prosperity. However, the supply of housing has failed to keep pace with that increasing demand, leading to those soaring prices and limited availability that we see. The roots of the supply issue are multifaceted. Land use regulations, zoning restrictions, and cumbersome permitting processes have hindered the construction of new housing units, exacerbating that supply shortage. Additionally, stagnant wages and rising construction costs have further strained affordability, particularly for low and middle-income households. Specifically here in Ann Arbor, over the past two decades, the university has added about 13,000 new students, but only 1,000 new student housing beds on campus. Private development has added about 5,000 beds near campus, but we are still more than 6,000 beds short for student housing. The university has added also more than 6,000 new jobs in the past few years, and the private sector has added more than 22,000 new jobs to the Ann Arbor area over the past decade. So, we have 40,000 new students and workers added to the area over the past two decades. And again, only around 6,000 new beds, almost all geared towards students. So, this lack of housing supply, coupled with high demand, has driven up prices so much that people who work or go to school here cannot find housing they can afford. So, they commute into Ann Arbor every day, increasing traffic, causing wear and tear on our roads, and releasing harmful carbon dioxide emissions. Our rental vacancy rate, as I noted earlier, is near zero, while a healthy rate that keeps rents stable is set to be around 7%. So, that pushes rents ever higher. And the wealthiest homebuyers get into bidding wars over the few houses available, causing gentrification of our neighborhoods. So, crucially, the primary objective of this resolution we're voting on now is to foster housing affordability through the increase in supply. The council directs the city administrator to pursue a series of changes to city processes, including streamlining site plan requirements, enhancing public engagement, and exploring options to improve efficiency in building code compliance. These recommendations were crafted after a thorough process of interviewing stakeholders throughout the building and development community to learn which aspects of the system are driving up costs unnecessarily, as well as benchmarking us against peer cities and examining their best practices. This probably was the media, it definitely is the media's resolution, and it was the part of this entire process that took the most staff time and research. And I really appreciate my, you know, my hat, hats off to you, Mr. Fornier, and the rest of city staff.
Counsel member.
Okay. Yes. Yep.
Is there further discussion? Counsel member Ackman.
Thanks. This is very meaty. 13 individual, well beyond that, resolved clauses. It asks for a lot. I would appreciate clarity. Some of these are very clearly asking for changes to the UDC. It would be helpful, I think, if staff could speak to what that involves in terms of next steps, because I think some people are wondering, what decisions are we making tonight versus what decisions are a direction to chart forward? But there's still going to be further discussion, vote, and details.
Mr. Fornier?
Thank you, members of council. I am John Fornier, deputy city administrator. And to answer your questions succinctly, at the conclusion of this meeting this week, I will be talking to our planning staff, Brett Leonard at Direct Delacourt, and we will be penciling out what our work plan is to achieve the things in the resolution. Some of these changes, we will be able to bring forward more quickly than others. Some of them are changes in the UDC that will require a little more work, a little more compliance with requirements of state law. Some of these changes will require us to bring on a consultant externally to help us get the work done. So, I can't speak in much specific detail about what will require what, because I want to have a chance to really work through that plan with staff. But this work will come, you know, at its pace over time, over the horizon that's outlined in the resolution.
But I guess to be clear, and maybe this is more statement for the public than anything, but for example, there are suggested changes to public engagement around site plans to make them more effective and timely for the public. I appreciate the general thrust, but I don't, just to clarify, we're not deciding here today what that looks like in the future. Something will be coming back to us for discussion and consideration about those details.
That is correct. That is correct.
Settle. Counsel member.
Could you speak a little bit more to the item that is about corresponding site improvements? Sorry, that's not what it is. The thing about utilities.
Sure. Utility upsizing requirements.
Yes. Can you speak a little bit more to that?
Sure. So, that, the specific section that you referenced when you asked your question of me earlier today is, there's a provision in our city ordinance that requires the privately-owned service lines that run from the city-owned utility to the property to be sized in accordance with the maximum allowable building under our zoning. And that's not always the size of building that gets proposed. A lot of times, there are buildings that come forward that are smaller than what's allowed under zoning. But because of the way our ordinances are written, we still require that service line to be upsized. Developers are frustrated with it. Our staff is also frustrated with it. They don't like telling a property owner, we know that the line that's in the ground now is fine and can appropriately service your building, but we're going to make you spend an extra $20,000 to dig it up and put a new one in, or something like that. And so, this is about the privately-owned infrastructure and making sure that that is simply sized for the building that's being proposed, rather than the maximum building size that's allowable under zoning.
Is there further discussion? Counsel member Briggs.
Yeah, just to follow up on that last point, I had communicated with you about this one as well. I mean, I, it'll be, I think, very important to see how these, the details of this, when it comes back to council, in terms of what the implications are to our budget and also future budget. I know that, I suspect that these regulations have been put in place in the past, in some ways, trying to ensure that residents in the future aren't paying, you know, that we, that we're paying for development as it comes. And I know that, I have also heard that this is a large concern. In particular, I've heard it as a concern for sustainable developments. And so, as this comes back, I'll be interested to see, you know, what, I'm particularly interested in encouraging developments to think thoughtfully about the water usage that they are, that they're utilizing. And we may be able to incentivize that. So, this is one, one I'll be paying particular attention to. But another one is around public engagement. One of the comments that we heard was around, you know, what the changes, what the removal of public hearings might look like in terms of noticing and how development, when that goes to planning commission, there might only be 18 hours of notice. Could you speak a little bit to how you're thinking about bringing some of these recommendations back to us in terms of options?
Sure. So, the intent of the changes that we talk about in the report is to change the timing and the quality of our engagement. It is not to quantitatively lower the amount of engagement. You know, what we, what is embodied in these resolutions are a couple really important ideas that I'm glad you asked about, because I think they're worth highlighting. Our site plans are subject to our citizen participation ordinance. And that ordinance requires notification by mail for property owners who live within a certain radius around where that site plan is proposed. And developers hold these meetings, you know, usually just a couple of weeks before they submit their site plan to the city. It's their developer-led meetings. They take their own notes. They incorporate their own comments. And then, the site plan is submitted to the city. We are proposing to change that notification so that there is a digital notification as well on all of our city platforms, effectively making it a citywide notification, not just a postcard to surrounding properties, and to move those engagement sessions so that they are concurrent with the submittal of the preliminary site plan to the city. This is before, still, before staff review has started in earnest on a site plan. It is not when the site plan is finished. It is not when it is finalized. It is still before substantial staff work happens, right? And through the staff engagement process, those notes from that citizen engagement meeting, which again, now would be a citywide digital notification, would have the opportunity to be incorporated into site plan revisions. So, that's one important change. The timing is important to us. Broadening the notification, I think, is important to us. I think you could consider that an instance where we're increasing engagement, right? Another important change is how site plans are treated at the planning commission meetings. Site plans, right now, they're actually on the agenda twice. They appear as an agenda item, but they also appear as a public hearing. So, you know, when you hear, oh, man, they're proposing taking the public hearing away from the planning commission, you might be tempted to think upfront, oh, no, the planning commission's being removed from this process entirely. But that's not actually the case. And it's a little misleading, I think, the way that that is described in some instances. But what we are proposing is that the site plans that are still subject to planning commission approval, not all of them are, but the site plans that are subject to planning commission approval would be on the planning commission agenda as a regular work item. But by changing how the hearing or how the meeting is defined under the OMA, it would shorten the amount of time that we would need as staff to publicly notice the meeting. So, oftentimes, what happens now is because the notification period, public notification period for a public hearing is so long, we are adding several weeks, sometimes more than a month, to the approval timeline for a site plan. If you reconfigure that hearing so it's not defined as a public hearing under OMA, but as council member Dish, I think, has suggested, and as some of us have discussed, you still allow people to give comment on those individual items when they come up on the agenda, right? So, you're not losing that engagement at the council meeting. We can have a shorter notice period. So, our planning commission agendas are oftentimes published with about two weeks to a week and a half of notice. And you would have that period of notice rather than, say, you know, a five-week notice period for a public hearing. So, that's the difference there.
Thank you. Counsel member Song.
I hope we can also speak to how in housing policy conversations, affordability is a really technical term, and what that means when we talk about, what we're trying to talk about is the need for plentiful or abundant housing. So, could you speak to how, I think there's general confusion when you hear affordable housing and not, not understanding that it's a regulatory category, right? So, when housing is designated affordable at 60, 80, 30, 60% AMI, it does mean it's actually affordable in ordinary language. Can you speak to how, what we're really looking for is abundance and diversity of housing?
Yes. Sure. And that's, you know, a theme that you heard from the governor, a theme that you've heard from President Biden, as you pointed out, a theme you've heard from you and from the report as well, is that we're trying to stimulate housing development at all income levels. In Ann Arbor, there is a housing shortage at virtually all income levels. That's been confirmed by study multiple times, and it's something we certainly deal with on a day-to-day basis here. We all see it, and we all feel it. So, supporting housing development at all income levels means maintaining your commitment to that affordable housing, the 60% AMI or 80% AMI. That is affordable housing that is subsidized. And it is either subsidized by the city or the housing commission, or it's subsidized through financing tools, you know, specific grants that are made available by the federal government, or sometimes by the state government, or it's just affordable housing that a private developer commits to put in their building on their own, but it's subsidized by the other payers, other renters or leasers or whoever within the building, right? So, that's important. Supporting housing development at all income levels means continuing your commitment to that subsidization. But making housing more affordable overall means meeting housing demand at all income levels. And what that will do is, over time, that will move that curve, that increase in housing cost, market rate housing cost. It'll help us lower it over time, right? So, that, that market rate housing becomes more affordable, not technically subsidized affordable housing, but it is a measure for housing affordability. That's very important.
I think it's important to highlight that we really are talking about two things here. There's the housing supply that we're trying to address through the process changes. And the process changes are, have come about because Mr. Fornier and Mr. Johney and the rest of staff did this work to talk to people throughout the development community and benchmark and best practices in other communities, and really learn what it is that's driving up the cost. And you've talked about a couple of things, you know, if we are requiring infrastructure beyond what is necessary for the building, that's added cost that gets passed down to the renters or buyers. The length of the process that developers need to go through, if it's extended unnecessarily, that's more cost, more meetings, more, you know, cost for the architects and the attorneys and everybody else who has to be in on that. And so, through this process of streamlining and reducing those hiccups in the system, we can both reduce the cost of what's being built and allow more housing to be built more quickly to attack the supply issue as well.
So, this resolution continues the theme. It's focused on sustainability. And one of the, one of the challenges that we face as we push forward to build more housing is how do we make sure that that housing is aligned or that new development is aligned with our, also our concurrent value of having sustainable buildings. And that's particularly challenging, because in our state, we cannot require buildings to be green buildings. And so, we have this conundrum and very limited tools to be able to address that with. And so, I'm appreciative of these recommendations that came out of the report, that talk about how we can start moving forward on both incentivizing it. We've also received another memo around beneficial electrification as well, or incentivizing things. So, we've drawn from a couple of different sources in the development of this resolution. For those who have not read it, a few of the key pieces, again, this is, everything will be brought back to council, and I'm sure there will be continued conversations. But we don't have definitions for what a fully electrified development looks like. We need that for our UDC. We don't have what an energy-efficient development is. We don't have what an energy-efficient development is. That should be in our Unified Development Code as well. We want to, you know, there's a whole number of recommendations that we need to evaluate and be able to hopefully move forward that will appropriately incentivize new developments to be the type of developments that we want to see. I recognize that the critiques that we've heard in the room already about this, this is something that, you know, we're rewarding developers for doing what they should already be doing. We shouldn't be subsidizing this with our dollars, with our tax dollars. You know, I personally, in the perfect world, we would not have to require this of any development, or we would not have to incentivize it, folks would just do it. But we've heard about how expensive it is to build. And the reality is, we need to find ways to make this more affordable to do the right thing. We have limited tools to be able to do this with. And if we have buildings that are built the wrong way, we are going to end up paying for it at some point. We have the climate emergency. It is a lot easier to have things built right. And if that takes a little bit of additional support from our community right now to make sure the buildings get built correctly the first time, that's something that I'm completely supportive of. We have a climate action millage that's going back and looking at buildings that have already been built and trying to retrofit them, and that is a lot more expensive. So, you know, I want to make sure that we can do everything that we can to make sure that we are getting buildings built sustainably.
Thank you, Councilmember. For those following along at home, I was informed that my mic was not on for that introduction. So that we are on DC 3, a resolution to direct the city administrator to implement new processes and programs to support sustainability in the built environment. It was moved by Councilmember Briggs and seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Councilmember Ackman.
I wanted to suggest an amendment or move to make an amendment to this, and it's just on the first whereas clause. And I will send this to Mr. Gerhart now. It has been sent. Sorry, I'm just trying to, what's that? Yeah, the first resolved clause, right now it says, "City Council directs the city administrator to pursue the following changes to city processes in an effort to alleviate any undue burden on land developments that may be caused by city inefficiency," which I think was probably lifted from the original resolution. And my suggestion is to change this to say, "City Council directs the city administrator to pursue the following changes to city processes in an effort to encourage sustainable developments that align with our community's climate action goals." I just think it's a more apt framing.
Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Is that friendly to the body? It is friendly. Councilmember Ackman, you still have the floor?
Yeah, I guess while I have the mic. I did want to, you know, I appreciate the comments that fully electrified doesn't necessarily mean that it's sustainable or efficient, and I think that's something that we should be looking at as these come forward. I would hope that we're looking also at fast-tracking things that are deemed energy-efficient. And actually, maybe while I have the mic, I'd like to ask the question about why are these two things separated and how are we thinking about these being two separate things used in certain places? Could someone speak to that?
Is that a question for staff or for the directors?
Sure, whoever, yeah, staff, please.
Mr. Fournier.
In all fairness, this was an amendment that was presented by Councilmember Dish.
Okay.
And so the question might be best directed to Councilmember Dish.
Okay, then I need to better understand it because you're saying that the two of them appear in different places. Do you mean in different resolutions?
No, so in the first, and the resolved clauses are enumerated, in the first two, it says that we should create and define a fully electrified development in the Unified Development Code, so clarifying, I think, what that means. And then number two, create and define energy-efficient development in the Unified Development Code. Get that, providing definitions around those things. Then number three, it says, "Create a fast-track approval process that prioritizes developments that are fully electrified," and it does not mention energy-efficient. So I'm just kind of wondering why, you know.
Mr. Fournier.
Well, certainly, thank you, Mayor Protem. I think the idea is that we would be creating the fast-tracking for only the fully electrified developments, but there would, other developments that are also identified as being energy-efficient would have, I believe it's a fee waiver is what's explored in the resolution language. So we're, forgive me for not being completely detailed on the amendment, but the idea is to separate those two ideas, essentially rank, order them, and provide more benefit to one and less benefit to the other.
I guess I'm not understanding why we're prioritizing fully electric over energy-efficient.
If you would like us to simply explore a recommendation on those two definitions, that would be fine as well. That'll give staff some time to work through these issues and bring an idea back to council.
Well, and I think I'd also be okay with just amending number three to say, "Create a fast-track approval process that prioritizes developments that are fully electrified and/or," you know, I'd like to explore both of these things, basically.
Sure, absolutely.
Am I hearing a motion?
Yes, sorry, motion to amend.
Is there a second to that? Councilmember Ayer, is that friendly to the body? It is. So can, to add, just for the clerk's sake, to add to bullet three, that is fully electrified and/or energy-efficient, correct? Thank you. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to speak a little more broadly to this and, again, appreciate the work of staff. As we work to make it easier to build new housing in Ann Arbor, the climate crisis mandates that we also ensure that housing is built sustainably to the greatest extent possible. Sustainability in the built environment helps mitigate the negative impacts of urbanization and construction on the environment. By promoting sustainable practices in construction, energy use, and waste management, we can reduce our carbon footprint and preserve natural resources for future generations. Sustainability also, of course, enhances quality of life for residents. Green buildings and urban design promote cleaner air, access to green spaces, and improved public health outcomes. Additionally, sustainable buildings often have lower operating costs, making housing more affordable and contributing to our economic resilience as a city. So in addition to calling for creating and defining the terms that we just discussed in our Unified Development Code, establishing a fast-track approval process for such developments, and modifying site plan review fees to incentivize sustainability, we also, through this, will be aiming to alter our evaluation criteria for developments, amend our legislative policy agenda to advocate for changes in state law by supporting tax abatements for electrified or carbon-neutral buildings and trying to ensure timely implementation of these changes. It's essential to note that these efforts, of course, align with our broader A20 initiative and our city's longtime commitment to environmental stewardship. By prioritizing sustainability in our development processes, we not only help mitigate the impacts of climate change, but also create a healthier, more resilient neighborhoods for future generations.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I appreciate the council members who've mentioned the conundrum that we face. Build, but we cannot require carbon neutrality. Interestingly enough, we have been doing better than you might think on this conundrum. Since September 2023, nine projects have been reviewed or approved by the planning commission, and five of those have received final approval by council. Six of the nine projects have been fully electrified, with exceptions for gas backup generators. Together, those six projects will add 1,342 units of housing in the city. And those are in fully electrified developments. Now, why is this happening? This is happening because we are at a stage in our city's development where developers are needing to rezone property in order to build on it efficiently. So we're getting rezonings come to us, we're getting PUDs come to us because our zoning hasn't caught up with where we and our residents are in terms of welcoming efficient land use. But I just wanted to underscore this record because I think it shows the power of incentives. So, I mean, we have leverage over these developers because they're asking us for zoning changes. And an incentive is a form of leverage. It's rather than the, you want this from me, I will give you it under the condition of, an incentive, if it's valuable enough, draws in someone who doesn't, who's giving you a by-right project. And so if we could have more, if we could have valuable incentives, which this resolution forecasts, a reduction of upsizing, needless upsizing of utilities, that's an incentive. We won't make you do that anymore. Fast-tracking, that's a serious incentive because time really is money. Separating site plan review from civil review because site plan review does not need to include every last detail about garbage, as much as I love those details, they do not need to be in the site plan. And I appreciate the point that was made earlier about we shouldn't be giving out cookies to persuade people to do something it ought to be doing anyway. But as I think others have mentioned in a different, framing it slightly differently, but developers in Ann Arbor are competing for investment dollars against people who could invest in other cities where development is not as expensive as we make it. And they can get a higher return on their development investment dollar in those cities. A handful of developers in this area bring us sustainable projects because they share our principles. We are going to have to use cookies to bring the others along, and they need to be big cookies. So this is the big cookie resolution.
Councilmember Song.
I really appreciate that last point because we know if you look at the Wasna County Opportunity Index, where affordable housing has been built, it's been in the townships. So, you know, if anything, after tonight, I'll take this resolution, I'll send it to Supervisor Pittsfield Township Supervisor Mandy Greewell and say, hopefully those tax dollars can come to Ann Arbor. That's where housing has been built, in the townships. That's where the tax dollars have stayed, in the townships. While jobs are here in Ann Arbor, we are still the economic engine of the entire county. I want to point to also the timing, which I really appreciate. You know, one of the reports that I really, really love and that I bring copies around to, I mean, everywhere, honestly, is the Housing Affordability and Economic Equity Analysis that the county did back in 2015. We're in 2024. Thank you, Joan Fournier, for bringing us a little bit up to speed. But I think the second page of this report is still timely and still relevant in this statement. "The imbalance in income, education, and opportunity between the jurisdictions, along with the segregation that goes with it, will hamper the regional economic growth potential of the area. Regions that experience strong and more stable growth are typically more equitable, have less segregation, and better-balanced workforce skills within them." So this is what I think this work is about. This is what the resolutions are about. We're catching up to what we knew in 2015 and what we should have worked on since 2015. Pandemic put us back. Universities putting us on notice. And it's time to do the actual work. So if I can be added to this resolution as a sponsor, I'd appreciate it, and I look forward to what's next.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
Yeah, so the way I see this resolution is that it's a continuation of work that we were asked to do and that we, several of us brought forward late last year about identifying incentives for electrification. We got a memo back. So we know that incentives are needed. We've used incentives for other things. I guess I learned pretty recently when we talked about the downtown height premiums that we used to incentivize building housing downtown. Things change over time. When conditions change such that some of these things that we are hoping people do the right thing for become easier and cheaper and there's a base of knowledge about how to do this and expertise that's built up, we will probably have to revisit these and we won't need these incentives. But right now, we do. And I just appreciate that we're, you know, looking for ways to entice people to do what we want to do since, again, we don't have, you know, forcing levers at our disposal.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. DC 4, a resolution to direct the city administrator to implement new processes and programs to support placemaking and tax-based improvements, moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ayer, is their discussion. Councilmember Cornell.
Thank you. Bringing up the rear on all the excitement here. This resolution directs the city administrator to pursue a strategy of property acquisition and disposition for strategically important parcels to ensure that they're developed according to our public policies' objectives and then therefore added to the tax rolls. We had a lot of conversation around this tonight where we heard, I think, for everything that the university does to benefit our economy, there are real, there are real activities by the university, especially around land acquisition, that are very frustrating. To be able to compete with the university without having a directive and a plan to do so is just never going to work. So I think, you know, for me, being able to look at what is actually required financially from an administrative perspective and certainly from a citizen participation perspective in order to be more efficient with acquiring property that the city can then develop for its own purposes to meet our goals is just really important. We talked a little bit earlier about placemaking initiatives. Placemaking is focused, it's by definition, to improve the quality of life of our citizens. And so it's how we make our community more habitable, it's how we make walkable neighborhoods, a vibrant downtown, public art, and basically directs the city administrator to think about how do we create destinations for visitors, citizens, and opportunities who want to live and work and be in our community. We see this work already started and initiated by this body as TC 1. So that is a step forward. That is what we are trying to endeavor with, TC 1. And basically, what this does is just ask that city staff come up with recommendations on how we can accelerate these same efforts that we want to put into TC 1 to make them livable, walkable, bikeable into our existing communities. So places like Lower Town, places like the Old West Side. And so I think, and just really quickly going back to U of M, and I do truly appreciate the benefits U of M has on our economy, but we lose $2.4 million annually. And that money can be used to support schools and parks and things that we have identified as a shared community value. It is, in my opinion, and I think shared by the feedback that we've heard and received on this, that Ann Arbor absolutely has to be more proactive and less reactive to the university as our neighbor. Specifically around that land acquisition, this resolution asks the city administrator to establish a fund and to develop a strategy to finance this activity so that property acquisitions do not necessarily need to be funded out of the general fund. So that's a really important distinction, is that we aren't trying to take from the general fund to purchase property that we know could benefit us from a tax perspective. We're actually finding a way to do that. And finally, it also asks for a working group to be established to consider the positive potential benefits of requiring development agreements to follow the same approval path as our corresponding site plans, which Mr. Fournier already talked about earlier. I'm really excited to see this. This was one of the first things that I asked about after I got elected and sort of felt confident that I knew who to ask questions of was, you know, around this property acquisition strategy, and I'm really enthusiastic to see it come forward tonight. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Councilmember Song.
I'm eager to see who our partners will be on this. So we should be able to see the DDA, we should be able to see AAA. When we talk about regional transit, when we talk about potential additional TIF corridors, if we can reimagine Wasna in this lifetime, I mean, I feel like this is where this conversation can live, right? And we know how difficult it is to live within political realities where we have to figure out what's going on with the state and federally, but here in our own home, in our own community, as opposed to employers and our schools and hospitals, I feel like this is where we can really leverage what we know and what we do best, which is be welcoming to Ann Arbor and understand that people are here for the same reasons that we ourselves are here. that people are here for the same reasons that we ourselves are here and why we care for this community. Tax-based improvements and new processes and programs, this is the strength of Ann Arbor. This is why people stay here. I always thank folks for, for paying their high taxes. But I know from when we've done surveys, for the most part, majority of residents understand where our taxes are going towards and appreciate the investments that we've made. So that trust in us, I hope, will continue. I'm really excited, again, to see the partners that will come forward because this is a good opportunity to strengthen our role as a, as a, as a regional place, a regional force.
Further discussion. Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. When I read about placemaking in this, the first thing that I think of is the fact that we have this beautiful river in the middle of our city that perhaps hasn't been, you know, thought through completely, what, what should go on it or how we should best, I don't know, make use of this beautiful, you know, resource in terms of placemaking. And I also think about the Argo Cascades, which I think is like a wonderful success story about, you know, making that section of the river a destination. As, there's an item on here, the item about creating the subquorum working group of city council to look at this charter amendment. And, you know, I don't think that, I don't take it lightly, you know, giving up the eight-vote majority. So I'm glad that a group is being formed to kind of think through this. It's certainly something that I want to think through and also want to highlight for residents that regardless of what the working group comes up with in terms of recommendations or what this body, I think the decision of this body would be to put it on a ballot for a charter amendment, and then people would have to vote for it. So it has to be a vote of the people, and I wanted to make that clear, that we are not making this decision tonight, and it will involve many decision points, including the will of the voters.
Further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. City Attorney Coward, do we have the pleasure of a closed session this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. We now have before us the Clerk's Report of Communications, Petitions, and Referrals, moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. All those in favor? Is there discussion? I apologize. All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. Do we have further communications from our city attorney this evening?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We have now arrived at our second public comment period, which provides an opportunity for the remaining speakers on our public commentary list to address council. The next speaker on our list is Kevin Karpik.
Hello. Thank you for all the work you've done today and for the time. So my name is Dr. Kevin Karpik, and I am a member of CROZES, the Coalition for Reenvisioning Our Safety. And I can speak both as a member of CROZES and as a professor of criminology, who spent the last quarter century studying the challenges to community-based reforms attached to criminal legal systems. I'm here to speak about the city development of an unarmed response program and in particular, addendum number one to RFP number 2416, unarmed crisis response implementation. CROZES reviewed the revised draft, confirming directly with over a half dozen experts and practitioners from across the country. This review raised serious concerns about the revised requirements for the program. For example, we were troubled by requirement R, which required any potential vendor to call 911 in any situation in which there exists, quote, reasonable suspicion, quote, that a crime may occur. This framing raised several red flags for us, largely because it is both a very broad charge and the inverse of how the term reasonable suspicion is usually used in manners pertaining to police. In most circumstances, reasonable is a legal framing used to give officers cover for discretionary choices in real-world situations. The preamended draft took away that discretion for non-police responders and could force any new program to become a police co-response program with an even more stringent reporting requirement than already exists. We have done our best to communicate these concerns to city staff, council, and the public, and would like to thank all those members of our coalition who have reached out to their city government in the last several days to offer feedback on the RFP for unarmed response. Therefore, we were happy to see that some of these issues have been addressed in the addendum that was issued today, for example, in the removal of requirement R. However, we remain concerned that the discretion of responders is being limited in a way that can undermine the program. The goal of the community is to create a program that uses the discretionary powers of an unarmed response alternative to police, one that will funnel situations that may be framed as criminal instances towards care-based solutions. Unfortunately, many elements of the RFP as it currently is amended continue to unduly limit the discretion of any potential response program. As any first responder, including police, will tell you, real-life situations are not as clearly defined as they may appeal in legal guidelines. Situational discretion relying on professional expertise is necessary for successful response. We urge city council and administration to consider further measures to assure that this discretion is institutionally and legally protected for any new program, whether it be through further amendment to the current RFP or broader changes to the city's legal code and classifications. Otherwise, many of the situations that our community has voiced a desire for in this program to respond may be ruled out as opportunities for a care-based response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christine Crockett. If Ms. Crockett is on the phone, as I know she left the meeting, please raise your hand. Then we will move on to Moscon Savabya Swani.
Hello, Ann Arbor. Let me recap as to what just happened here. Tonight, Ann Arbor City Council opened the doors of this city to Blackstone for developing Church Street. That was done in defiance of their own city offices' analysis, city planners' analysis that told them this is not going to help our problem with public housing, with affordable housing. They were told this is not the remedy, yet they went ahead and unanimously agreed that they will allow this development. If you are sick and tired of it, just like I am, vote for me and kick out Ms. IDF Iyer. This city council does not represent people of Ann Arbor. They sit and laugh at us, they pretend we're idiots, and we're not. We will vote them out. I want you to know that this company, which is called Blackstone, is a multi-billion-dollar development asset management company with strong ties to the apartheid state of Israel. They have strong investments in the apartheid state of Israel. Israel is a genocidal state that for 178 days has been slaughtering Palestinian people, has been starving Palestinian people. Israel has broken every law in this world. And the United States government, genocide Biden, genocide Joe, are fully empowering Israel to continue this genocide. This city council has had not one word to say about the genocide of Palestinians. They sit and watch as more and more women are raped. Yes, I said rape. Israelis have been raping Palestinian women. A woman was raped in Al Shifa Hospital for two days before she was assassinated, killed by Israelis. Women who are pregnant are being killed, first raped and killed in front of their families. These are the atrocities that we witness and we watch as it happens every day. Yet, this city council continues to sit quietly and watch this devastation. Vote them out, cut off military aid to Israel. This city council does not represent Ann Arbor.
Next, we have Blaine Coleman.
Last December, last December 4th, Mayor Christopher Taylor announced that Ann Arbor City Council has no intention of ever considering a resolution about Gaza. The whole city council stood behind him. But then, hundreds of people from the community flooded into these city council chambers. The community spoke for ceasefire and against military aid to Israel. City council never gave the community any resolution against military aid to Israel, but it finally did approve a very weak ceasefire resolution, that's it. So tonight, speaking for myself only, I demand that you finally approve the resolution against military aid to Israel, just like five other city councils have already done. I have demanded that resolution for 20 years, and so has Dr. Moscon. Israel has murdered over 40,000 Palestinians in just the last six months with your US tax dollars. This city council approves resolutions for Ukraine, Burma, South Africa, gay rights for Boy Scouts of America, international labor rights for Wendy's farm workers, and for federally mandated labeling of genetically engineered food. But, but, this city council chooses to go on the attack from the inside of its soul against anyone demanding a resolution, anyone demanding a resolution that opposes military aid to Israel. Look who ferociously attacks when we just ask for a resolution against military aid to Israel. Ex-councilmember Joan Lowenstein, current councilmember Dharma Ackman, whose campaign treasurer is Joan Lowenstein, councilmember Ackman's husband, who on March 31st shouted sharmuta at Dr. Moscon on these Ann Arbor streets. The word sharmuta means whore in Arabic, and any man who yells that at a woman is liable to physically assault or kill her. Councilmember Jen Iyer, who took campaign money from old friends of the Israel Defense Forces. And yes, Iyer's campaign treasurer is also Joan Lowenstein. Councilmember Lynn Song, whose campaign treasurer is, yes, Joan Lowenstein. For years, Mayor Taylor has worked to keep the mere mention of Gaza out of city council discourse, even as our tax dollars are used to massacre Gaza. And yes, Mayor Taylor's campaign treasurer is also Joan Lowenstein. In fact, as Israel was raining death down on the population of Gaza, Mayor Taylor publicly read a prayer for the state of Israel. That's the city council we're dealing with.
Thank you, your time is expired.
And we will make sure they approve a resolution against military aid to Israel.
With that, our public comment period is concluded. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Iyer, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.